Are we now recording?
I can confirm the recording has now started.
Good evening, councillors. I now open the extraordinary council meeting on the first of November 2021 at 6:02pm. Before the evening begins, I'd just like to go through some housekeeping for the virtual meeting. I'll endeavour once again to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to participate in the debate. However, this is a reminder that due to this being a virtual platform, the questions will be different to a general face-to-face. When speaking, please clearly state your name prior to addressing the meeting and I will, depending on the speed at which we are going through the meeting, I will just attempt to call a break if required, otherwise we will power straight through. So hopefully we will be able to do that and get through all of the items quickly. Please, as a reminder, raise your hand if you wish to speak or use the chat function. And I will now read the prayer and the acknowledgement. Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Randwick and Australia. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, now for the acknowledgement of country. I would like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bittigal and the Gadigal people who occupy the Sydney coast as being the traditional owners. On behalf of Randwick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respect to the elders past, present and emerging and to any Aboriginal people in attendance today. I now move to apologies and granting of leaves of absence. I've received one from councillor Bowen for lateness. Do we have any others? Okay, I'm going to take it that there was one from councillor Hamilton for lateness. Okay. All those in favour of the apologies and granting of leaves of absence say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Alright, thank you. I declare that carried. Declarations of pecuniary and non-pecuniary interests, councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to declare a non-pecuniary significant interest on item CP75/21. It's regarding a voluntary planning agreement for the development at 391 to 397 A and Z Parade and 17, 17 Barnarong Road, Kingsford. The reason being, I live within close proximity to the development and I live in the unit that I own. Thank you. Then I won't be, I won't be participating in the debate on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, are there any other declarations of interest?
Yes, Mayor, councillor Nielsen. I need to declare non-significant non-pecuniary interest in the merril minute that you're putting forward in terms of waiving the fees for the community centre for the memorial service, please.
Thank you. Are there any further declarations? Are we good to go? Okay, councillors, I'll just have a further chairperson's announcement. While we have just proceeded with the declarations of interest, I would just like to remind you that you continue to be obliged to disclose any and appropriately manage any conflicts of interest that you may have in regards to matters being considered at this meeting and you are obliged to remove yourself from the consideration of matters in which they have a pecuniary or non-significant pecuniary conflict of interest and that this occurs at any time. Okay. Could I just confirm through the general manager once again that there are no, there are no speakers for this evening? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. There being no public addresses, we now move to the merril minutes. The first one is MM40/21, which is a waiving of fees for the memorials, for a memorial sent service at the Randwick Community Centre for Mr Craig Coghlan. I would just like to commend this particular merril minute to the council. This has come to me via the recommendation of councillor Nielsen. Mr Coghlan was instrumental in the setting up of the Randwick Community Centre. He has also been a recipient of a Randwick Community Service Award in the past. I think this is a more than fitting and appropriate marking of his particular service to our community. Our community has lost a very active member. And with that, I commend this merril minute to the council. Are there any further speakers on this merril minute?
Sounds very appropriate.
Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews here. I haven't got an issue with the merril minute, but I'm just concerned about it setting the precedent for the future in relation to, you know, future merril minute in respect to memorial service. There's so many members of our community which, you know, you know, which will warrant a memorial service. I honestly, I just don't know how we're going to be able to deal with these in the future. You're, it's a great gesture you're doing and I totally agree with you. And I haven't got an issue with your merril minute, but I just think there needs to be something how, how we manage these in the future.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Andrews for your feedback. Councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza, your hand is raised. You are on mute.
I'm here, just, thank you. I just want to say I support what you're doing in your merril minute. I can understand councillor Andrew's concern. But sometimes, community members that have contributed to our community, I didn't know this gentleman, but I think it's a great way of saying thank you for the service offered. You may not have mentioned, but I was made aware that in Auntie Delma's case, that the family had little or no money to have services after the funeral and we did it at the Prince Henry Centre. And I was told in conversation that the general authority of the council allowed that to happen, to bring the community together. So I can see that your discretion and your wisdom on these matters is being appreciated and I say well done on this one.
Thank you very much councillor D'Souza. Are there any further speakers? Councillor D'Souza, I'm just conscious that you've just re-raised your hand. You have already spoken.
Trying to lower it anyway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, there being no further speakers, I will now put it, all those in favour, all those against.
Aye.
I declare that carried. We now move to the second merril minute, MM41/21. Reaffirmed opposition to confirmed bus cuts and modifications to bus routes impacting our community. Councillors, the reason why I'm bringing this late and supplementary merril minute is in line with the various resolutions of council opposing the bus cuts as proposed by the New South Wales Government. As recently as today, there has been an announcement that the government will be proceeding with these bus cuts. It is now a matter of fact that there will be at a minimum 23 or to 24 bus routes which will be lost across the eastern suburbs, including the six that have already been removed. While I note that there have been very, very minor modifications. There is no disputing that there will be fewer bus routes servicing our area than before these changes. And I think it is more than fitting that council in line with its previous positions resolves very strongly our extreme displeasure. There are a couple of particular things which are worth noting. One of them is that we importantly inform the community that this is now a matter of fact, that the government has now confirmed these changes. This is not simply a proposal. Importantly, to give people time to adjust, but also to give the community a final opportunity to try and persuade the government otherwise. And then the second thing, which I think is also of great importance, is to actually call to release the consultation data. I note that the the New South Wales Government has released a consultation report. However, the, the extent of the information which has been provided to the, to the community as to how it's actually responding, in my view, is rather limited. And the raw data as it relates to that, for us to have a real understanding as to what the community's view on this, I note that the consultation itself was extremely constrained and limited the ability of residents to provide feedback. Nevertheless, there were several thousand responses, so it was huge. So with that, I commend this merril minute. I have councillor Sed's hand raised, so I will now go to councillor Sed.
I commend this. Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I commend this, commend you on this merril minute. I too read the report when it came out this afternoon and unfortunately, 11 out of the 24 bus routes that are affected are all coming out of the South Ward. So we're just one short of half of all the affected bus routes. So I commend you on this and from the people of the South Ward who are going to be severely impacted by these bus cuts. Hopefully we can get something through and putting it out there and making sure that the community realises what's happening and the impact that it will cause is a good thing. So thank you on that.
Thank you councillor Luxford.
Yeah, Mr Mayor, I too commend this merril minute. I have been a champion of these, you know, of, of these bus cuts, you know, out there with the RTBU. I did get notification from them today regarding these bus, bus cuts. And I know that they, they are offering a little bit of an olive branch, you know, on one particular route, but that doesn't help, you know, the rest of the community. Councillor Sed has mentioned the South Ward. In West Ward, our buses only go to Redfern Station. This does not help the elderly, the infirmed, the disabled. Because as we know, Redfern Station only has one lift on one platform. And if your train happens to come in on the wrong platform, then you're stuffed. And, you know, this is not good for our community at all. And we must also not forget, Mr Mayor, the jobs that are going to be lost through the cuts at the Randwick Bus Depot. Those people live in Randwick City, you know, so it, they're cutting the jobs of our residents as well. So we must not forget that the, but the jobs are also part of our community, you know, the, the people spend their money here. They, they live here and they're going to lose their jobs as on top of, we're losing the buses. People are losing their jobs. So we must not forget that either, Mr Mayor. When we're writing or we're letting the community know about this matter, that we also have to stick up for the people who are losing their jobs. So I commend this, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Luxford. I now call on councillor Roberts who has his hand raised, followed by councillor Andrews and councillor Steverinos.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. This being a state issue and you being an employee of a state MP, are you going to declare an interest in this matter?
My employment is declared in several council documents. I don't think it's appropriate in this thing because I'm also a resident of the city of Randwick and it's directly relevant to that.
So you don't think, you don't think it's relevant to, to mention it in the, in the matters as they come, as they come before council?
I think there's a longstanding understanding of that. It's also on registers around my employer. I don't think that is in any way surprising.
Well, I'm very surprised, Mr Mayor, but I'm happy to move on.
Thank, thank you very much councillor Roberts. We've extensively gone through.
Yeah, so, so this state matter. I haven't had a chance to read the, the release. You being an employee of a state opposition member, I have concerns you may have missed out or omitted some matters that would be of also interest to the community. I would like to read the release before I vote on the matter. I know it's not, it's not coming in until December, so could we defer this until the ordinary November meeting?
Thank you councillor Roberts. I'll take that as a suggestion, however, in light of the fact that there is until the cuts are scheduled to come in on December 5, which would leave, leave a matter of days. I think it would thoroughly deprive our community of an ability for input. Any councillor may, you know, seek to amend this merril minute if they so see fit. But look, I do not find that appropriate and I would oppose any suggestion in order to defer council taking a firm position in relation to this in light of the very extreme circumstances.
Well, then, well, it's two weeks, there'll be still two weeks from the ordinary meeting until that comes in. Would any councillor be willing to second an amendment?
No.
Yep, I'm happy to second that councillor Roberts.
Oh, you've appeared.
Thank you councillor. So I move an amendment that we defer this matter, give councillors time to brief themselves on the changes. Notwithstanding our opposition to any cuts to existing services.
I have a question for the mover of this amendment.
Okay, thank you councillor Nielsen. Through you to the mover of the amendment, councillor Roberts.
So councillor Roberts, if in fact you find out that there are no improvements whatsoever and you find out that the bus stops are mostly moved, what are you going to do?
Well, you know, is that, is that, is that a question about, you know, some hypothetical future? Is that what you're saying councillor? Of course, I would, I would be absolutely hostile to any changes that would result in a net loss of services.
Well, that's what's happening.
As I've consistently said in the past councillors, I would like to actually read the matter before I vote on it. I think that's reasonable. And I think it's reasonable for all councillors. And there still will be plenty of time to raise a community campaign before the commencement of the services.
Thank you. So, so councillor Roberts, did you want to speak to your amendment any further or have you said everything?
My assumption is that I don't have the numbers, so I'm happy to put it. But it's important that this is put on the record.
Okay, what, what I might just suggest is I will offer the second, if she wanted to speak to it first. Just by virtue of the fact that we haven't had any two for two against on it, but councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to say that in support of councillor Roberts, he has always opposed this. I've opposed this. I've always felt that the community needed to know exactly what was happening. But considering that we have not had the opportunity to really ensure that we understand exactly what we're voting for here. And in light of the fact that we always are given the opportunity to be provided with as much information as possible through our business papers, through emails from directors and council staff prior to council meetings. So I believe that this amendment actually speaks to the lack of due process when voting on something at such short notice.
Can I see the amendment written, please? Is it written on the thing there?
Yeah, I can see it. It's written on it. Reading that this matter be deferred to the November council meeting to allow councillors to receive and consider further information on this matter. And I believe the ordinary council meeting for November is scheduled for the 23rd of, of November. Okay.
Can we delete, can we delete further? Because we want to know information on the matter. The information on this matter.
Thank you. Can I just ask if are there any further speakers on the amendment? Otherwise I will put it.
Can we take a division, Mr Mayor?
Yes, okay. There being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put it, all those in favour of councillor Andrews's amendment?
Councillor Roberts.
Sorry, sorry.
If I'm having an introduction, I think.
Yes, 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 we are. We are. There's been a call for a division, Mr Kelly. Okay, all right. We'll now go around the horseshoe. Councillor Hamilton?
For the amendment.
Deputy Mayor Shuri?
Against.
Councillor Nielsen?
Against the amendment.
Councillor Veitch?
Against.
Councillor Steverinos?
Against.
Councillor Luxford?
Against.
Councillor Singh?
For.
Councillor Andrews?
Against the amendment.
I believe councillor Bowen has still not arrived. Can I just confirm that before we go through? Mr Kelly, Mr McNiven?
I can confirm that councillor Bowen hasn't arrived in the meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mattson?
Against.
Okay, councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor De Rocha?
Against.
Councillor D'Souza?
Against.
Councillor Sed?
Against.
And the mayor is against, so I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. There, I have three hands to speak on the motion, beginning with councillor Andrews. Councillor Andrews.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Look, I, I commend your merril minute and I will be supporting your merril minute. Because council must continue to oppose number cuts, any bus cuts through our local area. And we need the retention of our bus services here. You know, the people of Marubra have been calling, have been screaming about any cuts to bus services, especially my community around Lexington Place and South Marubra, where essential bus services have been named to be cut. This is something as a councillor which we need to continue our opposition to. And I'm new in bringing this forward. Yes, we do want to see the raw data from the community. And we want to see the outcomes of the consultation. So I will be supporting your merril minute tonight.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Steverinos?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I too commend you on your merril minute tonight. The fact remains, Mr Mayor, that any cuts or any implementation to cut bus services can only be bad for our community. At the end of the day, we need to have an integrated public transport system. And part of that integral part of our public transport system are buses. And at a time when people are doing it tough and we know that the community has done it tough over the last few months, now is not the time that the government should be cutting back or the state government should be cutting back on public transport services in the eastern suburbs. This is not the right time to be doing these, to be implementing any sort of change. And I think I'll commend you on your merril minute. And I do believe that we are community representatives. We've been elected here by the people for the people. And what you're doing tonight is openly coming out and speaking on behalf of your community and our community at large. And I commend you. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Steverinos. Councillor D'Souza?
Mr Mayor, I do commend you on your mayoral, mayoral minute. I can sympathise with councillor Roberts. The sentiment of, of what he was saying in a sense that he can't choose to vote for something that he is not made fully aware of. But in my case, it's not the process I'm voting on, but it's the outcome. And the outcome of what is going to occur if this policy is implemented is disconnect in our community. The bus services and the integrated transport system in our area helps knit a community together. We all, we talk about COVID and we all know what COVID did. Because of what was, what we had to adhere to and the rules, a lot of families were separated. And a lot of times loneliness and depression became an integral part of people's lives. Now, it's a long bow to say the bus services and COVID have something or draw a line between the two, but the fact is that implementation of this policy will lead, lead to our community not having the opportunity to see their relatives. So I won't, I will support your amendment, I won't support.
Sorry, councillor, councillor, councillor D'Souza, if you could just, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But in saying that, so I will fully support your merril minute because it helps to preserve that sense of community that we are so proud of in Randwick City. And it also says to the government of the day that this is a policy which is unacceptable because and not enough consultation has been done on it. And decisions like these don't help build communities. They help disenfranchise communities. I'll leave it at that, Mr Mayor. I'm sorry about the phone call.
Don't worry. Thank you very much councillor D'Souza. Councillor Veitch?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I too commend the, the merril minute and thank you for putting it forward. You know, someone who catches public transport to some of my workplaces and obviously kids catch buses, you know, young people. You know, older primary school children who are starting to get some independence. More elderly people who don't have their own vehicles. There are just so many people who 100% rely on public transport in the city of Randwick. I just cannot for the life of me understand why the state government is proposing these, these bus cuts at a time when, as other councillors have mentioned tonight, many families are doing it tough. Petrol prices are actually sky high at the moment. And the best way for many people to, to get around is through public transport. And for many people, that's the only choice that they have. I'd like to propose an amendment to see if it is acceptable to, to you, Mr Mayor, to see if it's possible to consider a COVID-safe community rally put on by Randwick Council. I know we are still coming out of the pandemic, but if there is a way to convene a rally in a COVID-safe way that could be attended by community members outdoors and safely, I think this would be a good way to express our opposition to these bus cuts. Is that something you would be prepared to support?
It is something that I'm prepared to support. However, I would just say in terms of with your councillor Veitch, that that, that the mayor and general manager be delegated in order to determine that. And the reason why is I'd like to seek input from police as well as relevant authorities as to the reasonableness of that as an action.
Yeah, I completely understand. And so, as I said, I'm putting it forward as a suggestion. I wouldn't move it as an amendment if it wasn't agreeable.
Under that, under that framework, if you're fine, I'm, I'm happy to, to, to accept that. I am just still very conscious of the current health situation.
Totally. So yeah, happy to, to see what comes back out of those consultations. Thank you.
Councillor De Rocha?
I thoroughly commend you for this motion. I think that in the reduction to bus services, you know, your, your title of your, your merril minute says it all. Every day we speak to people about what's going to happen to us. Do they care about us? And this is mainly towards the aging or even people that are around this area and many of them do have drug problems. They don't have a licence, you know. Through whatever reason, they rely on our bus service. I think that, you know, this merril minute is just a reminder to say we're not going to give up on this. We're not going to go away and we're not going to fix the defects of the light rail. And that is by reducing a bus service to get minimal, you know, buses heading to that response where then they break down and no one gets anywhere. I think this is a great merril minute.
Okay, thank you councillor De Rocha. Councillor Bowen?
Thanks, Mr Mayor. For some reason, my camera's not working, but hopefully you can hear me.
We can, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the other councillors and congratulate you on the merril minute. And, you know, I think it needs to be said that this is a bit of a a major admission by the state government, the failings of light rail. You know, it's good news and good news for East Ward that the 373 bus is to be retained and to travel every 10 minutes to the city. But it really raises a question about the efficacy of light rail. And, you know, I'm reminded of a meeting in, I think it was the last council term that we went to with the then Transport Minister on the basis that we, Randwick community was contributing tens of millions of dollars to light rail. And I'll never forget the way we were treated in that meeting where we were essentially berated and told by the then Transport Minister that they, that she would do whatever she liked. They didn't need our consent. And I just couldn't believe the, you know, the attitude to our community that was expressed. So, you know, it just goes to show you that if you hang in there, the truth will out. And, you know, it's really important that so many of these other buses are retained. In particular for our, our community, our LGA, the 400. But I congratulate you on the merril minute. But I congratulate you on the mayoral minute.
Thank you, councillors. Councillor Roberts, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate that a mayoral minute sent at 17:40, at 5:40pm, 20 minutes, 20 minutes before a meeting is highly unprofessional, Mr Mayor, and it puts council in a very difficult situation. So I'd suggest to you in the future, you can keep that to a minimum. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Roberts. Look, okay, in closing, the reason for the late notice for this particular mayoral minute is because this particular change was dropped on our community with no notice as soon as today. And the meeting schedule only providing two weeks if it were to be resolved for action from the council. So while I understand councillor Roberts' frustration, I took the case that this was the more than appropriate course of action. I understand that he moved an amendment to that effect. However, in that light, thank you very much. So with that, I shall put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Thank you. Is there now?
I'd like a division on that.
Sure. Okay, I'm more than welcome to go to a division. Councillor, Mr Kelly? Okay, councillor Hamilton?
I'm for this motion.
Councillor Shuri?
For.
Councillor Nielsen?
For.
Councillor Veitch?
For.
Councillor Staverinos?
For.
Councillor Luxford?
For.
Singh?
For.
Councillor Andrews? Councillor Andrews, you're on mute?
For.
Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Mattson?
For.
Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor De Rocha?
For.
Councillor De Souza?
For.
Councillor Sid?
For.
Okay, and the mayor is for, so I declare that carried. Okay. Thank you. We now move to urgent business. Councillors, is there any urgent business? Okay, there being no urgent business, I now move to in Sariatum. I will call the items and please, as I'm looking down. Okay, CP75/21. Okay, I believe that is challenged by councillor Mattson. Okay. Okay, director of corporate services report.
No, actually, Mr Mayor, I withdraw my challenge to that.
Okay.
Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews.
Challenged by councillor Andrews. Okay. CO64/21, long-term financial plan. No challenge.
Oh, sorry. Mr Mayor, sorry, Mr Mayor. I don't challenge 75, Mr Mayor, sorry.
Okay.
Challenge!
Okay. Okay, I'm going to go through again. CP75/21, public notification of the VPA for the development at 39/3978 Anzac Parade. Bunnarong Road, challenged by councillor Luxford. Okay. CO64/21, long-term financial plan.
Challenge councillor Andrews.
Councillor Andrews. CO62/21, draft council meeting schedule. Unchallenged. I move the one unchallenged item, CO62/21. Do I have a mover?
I'll second it, councillor Veitch.
Councillor Veitch, do I have a mover?
Move it, Mr Mayor, I'll move it.
Okay, councillor Staverinos? Okay, thank you. I declare that carried. We now move to the first challenged item, CP75/21, public notification of the VPA for the development at 39123978 Anzac Parade and 17 Bunnarong Road, Kingsford.
Mr Mayor, councillor Singh here, I will now excuse myself from the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Luxford?
Okay, I don't want to move this particularly, but I want it recorded that I will not be voting for it. So if someone wants to move it, go ahead.
Mr Mayor, I'll move it, councillor Mattson.
Moved councillor Mattson. Councillor Mattson, would you like to speak to it? Do we have a second?
Certainly.
Seconded councillor Shuri.
Seconded by councillor Shuri. Okay, councillor Mattson, can you please just confirm for the meeting what it is that you're moving?
I am moving the recommendation on the business paper.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mattson, please proceed.
Councillors, this is inevitable. None of us voted for it. It was actually approved by the Land and Environment Court. It was approved based on our existing development standards in our local environmental plan. So none of us put our hands up for this particular DA. If you are thinking that that is significant, it is not. The courts imposed the conditions, as I understand it, they imposed the condition relating to the voluntary planning agreement, which flows from existing clauses and standards in our local environmental plan. Now, what would be the outcome if we opposed this? I can understand that there is a lot of emotion about this, but the reality is we would lose $3,579,000 in affordable housing and slightly less than that in infrastructure needs. Those infrastructure needs, the schedule that's in the draft planning agreement attached to this report are based on calculations taken from our local environmental plan. If we refuse to accept this VPA, the applicant would logically go back to the Land and Environment Court, would argue that they had presented the VPA in good faith as stipulated by the Land and Environment Court and that they should now be removed from any responsibility to pay that money. I don't know what the court would do then. Possibly the court would send it back to us, I don't know. But my grave concern is that possibly the development as approved by the previous Land and Environment Court will go through without us receiving a significant share or perhaps none of the money that we would otherwise get. I added it up, as I understand it, a total sum of $6,529,242 would be lost. As I understand it, most of that would be spent in Westward. I really don't think we've got anywhere to go on this, councillors. We all approve of affordable housing. It's something I think that unites us all. I think we all agree that if a development is going ahead, then a local consent authority, the council, has the right to insist that it be recompensed or be provided like-in-kind to offset the impact. The point I'm making, councillors, is that the decision to approve was made back in June this year by the Land and Environment Court. We have to deal with it one way or another.
Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Okay, so thank you councillor Mattson for explaining again to us all of this. I'll just make it known, I didn't vote for DCP, LEP, NOPs. I, you know, whilst I understand totally that we will get money, to me, we are prostituting ourselves to these developers. And whilst we're going to get money for affordable housing and we're going to have, you know, housing stock for the vulnerable, you know, the destitute, the whatever, I don't understand where we're going to put them when every single development that is coming online is either student accommodation or boarding houses. So I don't know where we're going to house these people because the housing stock isn't being built, you know. And no amount of money can fix the disaster of Kensington and Kingsford. And I'm waiting for Kensington and Kingsford to become university suburb and lose then their identity entirely when we change the name to University City. You know, because all we've got now are boarding houses. I drove down around Kensington Oval the other day in the beautiful home on the corner of Doncaster Avenue, I think it is, or Moreamey, that's become a boarding house and another level added on top. And the four lease signs are up, you know, to lease little boxes in what was once a beautiful home that housed a family, you know. K2K is not delivering what it should. And I don't know, you know, where do people go and downsize if they want to stay and live in Kensington? A boarding house or a student accommodation room? Like, wow. I would be totally happy to support any of this if it was delivering what it should. But unfortunately, Scap and Nexo, or whatever the other company is called, have nearly taken up the whole of Anzac Parade from Moor Park all the way down to Kingsford. So how does that help what was once, well, were two beautiful suburbs? And as I've said before, I drive through Redfern every night and at the corner of Cleveland Street and Regent, what do I see? Another big Scap Tower ugly building being built there, which reminds me that that's what I'm going to have in Kensington. You know, I grew up around here, maybe I am emotional about it. But loads of people left Surrey Hills and Redfern, the slums of the city, the inner-city slums, to come out to have beautiful suburbs to live in. Now those suburbs are way better than mine. And all it's doing is making it worse. We're just bringing in people that have no sense of community. They're transient people, they don't care. And, you know, they're not contributing to the beautiful suburbs that we had in Randwick City. And so I just cannot support this anymore because all we're doing is, oh, you can have a building, just pay more money and you can have no car parking, you can have more floors and you can make more profit. So I cannot support and will not support on principle. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Luxford.
Question?
Sir, yes, councillor Roberts?
Thank you. It might assist with the debate. And my question is to the staff. Could they just clarify the second dot point in the executive summary? Mentions some significant funding. So my question's pretty binary. If we reject this matter tonight, will the development proceed regardless? Because they have a Land and Environment Court approval. But will they not have to pay these amounts in the second dot point if we reject this matter tonight? If we, and if we, if we accept this matter tonight, the matter will obviously go ahead, but we will receive over $5 million of funding. I'd like to know the consequences in terms of, in terms of that. So the first question is, will this matter, will this development proceed regardless of what we do tonight? And what's the monetary impact on council if we support it or if we don't support it?
Okay, thank you, councillor Roberts. Through to the relevant officer, but before the relevant officer, I'd just like to confirm councillor Shuri, you are next. You were actually missed in the initial debate and that is my apologies as the second of this motion. To the acting director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At this point in time, the determination is approved as a deferred commencement consent subject to the contributions being paid within a specific time period. I don't know the outcome, but I would assume that if the council do not agree to this tonight, then they would seek to have the matter determined in court. I don't know what the outcome of that may be, to be honest. But I would assume that one way or the other, the condition would need to be applied in some way or form or it would come back to council, I would assume.
Thank you. Councillor Shuri?
Whilst I really agree with the sentiments that councillor Luxford has said totally, this development application is out of our hands. It's been approved by the Land and Environment Court. We're not sitting here in judgment over this development application going ahead. We're here in judgment of whether we're going to take the usual voluntary contributions that developers make when they actually have a development. And all it will do is give us the affordable housing, give us improvements to the road and outside. I understand we're between a rock and a hard place, councillors, but we haven't approved this development. It has gone to the Land and Environment Court, they have approved it. We have to make the best that we can make of this. I'll leave it at that, in Harry's words.
Thank you. I have a hand up from councillor Sid. Councillor Sid?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was actually going to ask the exact same question as councillor Roberts. But just to clarify what both councillor Roberts has asked and what councillor Shuri has said, because I drove past a development on Saturday and the fences are up. So it has been approved and it looks like it's getting ready to start. So I don't think any decision tonight will actually change the build. I just want to clarify again with Roman that through you, Mr Mayor, a question that, just to clarify what councillor Roberts was saying, that is the alternative that it's going to happen anyway because it's approved? And if we reject it tonight, all that means is that we have to pay for a Land and Environment Court to get what we were about to get tonight? Then we've got to take it to court to get what we were going to get in the first place. Is that correct?
Okay. Thank you, councillor Sid. Through you to the relevant officer.
The condition, as I say, is a deferred commencement condition. So they can't commence the development until they get a letter from council that confirms that they have satisfied the contribution requirements. I would think quite that there would be no option for the developer to seek a declaration from the court if council does not enter into the agreement as per the condition, because it in effect is holding up their development. But I don't know how the court would deal with that, I'm not too sure. I haven't come across that scenario before.
There's a possibility that they could actually change it for the, and actually make a worse proposal through the courts.
Well, if you don't mind me saying, Mr Mayor, the only thing I think that maybe is worthy of consideration is that the matter was referred to council in March and council supported in principle the entering into a VPA for this site and the other two sites, which is, was taken into consideration when the court issued their approval in June a few months later. So the court's determination has clearly taken into consideration council's resolution of 23rd of March in support of the VPA in principle.
Thank you. I actually have a follow-up question and it relates to, is there anything in this report in light of the confusion amongst councillors as to the implications of this decision, which would prevent it from being deferred until the November meeting?
Through.
Kindly defer.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Given that you're about to enter into caretaker mode, that would prevent you from making this decision at the November meeting?
Okay. Thank you, Madam General Manager. I now move to the next speaker on the matter, councillor Roberts. Councillor Roberts, you're on mute. Councillor Roberts, you're on mute.
Sorry, my hand was up from the question, apologies.
Okay, thank you councillor Roberts. Councillor Stavreinos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I would challenge councillor Mattson. If this was the Coogee Bay Hotel development, I can guarantee that councillor Mattson would not be entering into any sort of voluntary planning agreement for 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 high rise to be built down there. Now, he's got to understand too that the councils of West Ward, who represent their constituency, do not want high rise along Anzac Parade and we do not agree with entering into this voluntary planning agreement. Now, we heard from the director of planning tonight that irrespective of whether we support this VPA tonight or we don't, it will be determined by a court. I'm not prepared to put my name to a voluntary planning agreement, you know, to to support this, especially when my stance against K to K has been consistent. I don't agree with the LEP and DCP and I believe that it's actually taken away from the amenity of residents and the town centres of Kingston and Kensington. And for that reason alone, I will not be supporting this. Now, right from the start, I said that K to K wasn't right for Kingston and Kensington because it would see 20 storey high rise being built on Anzac Parade and wouldn't offer any proper housing affordability options for people wanting to live in our city. What we are seeing right now is an influx of student accommodation units being built. We've already got 1,000 that have already been planned through the development application. And they'll they'll all be built right along Anzac Parade and they will not provide a single car space because this council voted for a DCP which permitted that. And with students nowhere to be seen due to the COVID-19 pandemic, what we are gonna have are all these boarding rooms now being occupied by professional people who own cars. And this is only gonna create more parking pressures right through Kingston and Kensington. And to add further to the argument, no developer is gonna want to build proper residential housing along this strip because it's gonna cost them millions of dollars more and millions of dollars more to the cost of their construction because they need to provide car spaces. So what we are gonna have is 2,200 rooms as per our DCP and they're all gonna be student accommodation, not not providing a single car space. So in fact, it's not gonna address the housing affordability issue that we that we that our LEP and DCP was supposed to be addressing. Now, on top of that, a number of the property owners in Kingston and Kensington, along the town centre there, they're sitting back and waiting for developers to come knocking on their door to offer millions of dollars to buy their properties so that they can build these 20 storey monstrosities and other 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 high rises that they're talking about. And what's worse is that a number of these shops are remaining vacant because these landlords are refusing to give extended leases to any of these any of these shops. Now, I know for a fact because I wanted to open an office in Kensington and I spoke to a landlord there and he would not offer me anything more than a 12 month lease. Now, the last thing I wanted to do was spend $40,000 fitting out an office and 12 months later be told, sorry, there's a demolition clause in your contract and we want to remove you from that building because now we've sought to a developer. This is what happened as a result of K to K. K to K has caused a disaster for our shops because a number of these landlords and property owners are sitting back waiting for developers to come along to offer them the millions of dollars so that they can vacate, get out and get their money and run. Now, I cannot support this voluntary planning agreement tonight because I don't believe that it's right. And K to K has brought destruction to the Kingston and Kensington town centres. And I really, really, I I just think it's so sad that we've got a situation now where, you know, no proper housing will be provided, no car spaces will be provided. I mean, you know, where's the benefit? You talk about benefit, where what benefit? I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavreinos. I now have a hand raised from councillor Bowen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I don't support it either. And I'd just like to register my disappointment in the email I received this afternoon from a councillor urging me to support this. I I find it extraordinary.
Disgraceful, disgraceful.
That here I am being pressured, feeling pressure from another councillor to vote for this contentious development. There's plenty agreement associated with his contentious development. I, you know, I found it completely unacceptable. I won't name the councillor, but we all know who I'm referring to. And I would ask him in future to please do not send me any of these these emails urging me to support a development. I found myself a a component of a development application. I found myself in a very uncomfortable situation. And I resolved it by maintaining the position I have always maintained. I've not named the councillor, but in my opinion.
It's me for the record, councillor Matt.
I I'm not, if you wanna.
Disgraceful.
Bet on up, that's a matter for you. But, you know, I found it and I found the the suggestion that other councillors had exercising their right to vote was described as blocking. That's just not not on. But in any event, I I don't support the planning agreement. I think it's pretty much all been said. But of course, the genesis of this is the K to K. And if you look at the statement of the environmental effects for this, I think it's an 18 storey building, a boarding house for a commercial boarding house operator. The justification is K to K, a very controversial decision of the council and also proximity to light rail, which we found out today can't can't work and and we have to retain the local buses. So it's fair enough that the West Ward councils, and I of course grew up in that area as well, but it's fair enough for the West Ward councils to say, sorry, we're not, we we are prepared to take a stand on this because we do not agree with the process, we do not agree with the arguments that have been put forward. And then for us to be presented with this sort of Sophie's Choice that, well, well, I I would draw that, but it's presented to us that, well, if you don't take the money, that somehow you, you know, you're breaching. I think there's even a suggestion of fiduciary duty in this email. Wrong, 100% wrong. The number one duty is to your community and to vote with what you believe is in their best interest. And that's what I'll be doing.
Thank you councillor Bowen, councillor Veach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, I won't be voting in support of this report. Council in the past has had opportunities to improve the situation of residents in West Ward and we've lost a lot of really significant opportunities. In just this last week, I've received phone calls from residents affected by, you know, issues from the construction of a large student accommodation. That is gonna be, I mean, whoever is elected to West Ward in the next term, they're gonna have their work cut out for them because it's it is just going to be a nightmare, in all honesty. I've met, you know, with a resident from the northern part of Kensington who doesn't like catch the light rail because it's too slow to get to the CBD. This person works in the CBD. He should be hopping on there, lives a few steps away from the light rail, but it's too slow. And just this morning, you know, I I visited the home of a West Ward resident who lives behind the K to K alignment on one of the parallel streets there. And they were there to show me personally what the impact was gonna be of one of these buildings, not the building in question tonight. And I was just horrified. I just thought, what are these people, what on earth are they going to do? They're gonna be stuck with it and they don't really want to move. But if they tried to sell now, what kind of, how, you know, how are they actually gonna be able to find a similar place in the area? These are having genuine impacts on the amenity of West Ward residents. Not only that, West Ward councillors tried to, in good faith, move amendments to the DCP when that came through. When changes came through that, there was all these flexible zones proposed we that weren't in the original exhibition. The lane ways, the little passageways, the setbacks, we've lost all those. And I can tell you, this is having direct impacts. This is affecting the resident I met with today, the residents I met with today. They're not getting those setbacks, they're not. So those developers are in essence the payback they're getting for the benefit they're getting from those flexible zones is far outweighing any any little bit of monetary contribution. And to be quite honest, we've been waiting a whole term, if not longer, just to see the 60 grand that was promised to West Ward residents for the light rail mitigation, to chuck up a few flags, put some, you know, fix up the Meek Street Plaza. It's taken four years, we haven't even got that that bit of money to fix up that. So so who only knows? Like, when will anyone even see this $3 million? I mean, are we gonna wait till every single new building on Anzac Parade has been finished before any of this work is even started? Everyone will be gone. And to be quite honest, the comments about the affordable housing, I totally support affordable housing, but we need big efforts from the state and federal government. And then councils can contribute to that for genuine social housing, public housing and affordable housing. There is actually some semi affordable housing throughout Kingston anyway at the moment. That is where students and other people on on not so high incomes are actually able to afford to get a little flat at the moment because a lot of those places aren't so new. And so that's all gonna be gone, you know? And unfortunately, the residents who are there are gonna be having to live with the impacts of these developments going around them left, right and centre. So I won't be supporting this, thank you.
Thank you councillor Veach. Councillor D'Souza, and before you start councillor D'Souza, I also have hands up from councillor Andrews and then councillor DeRush in that order. Councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, the dinosaurs were one of the biggest of their kind, but the times changed and they didn't adapt. They didn't evolve, where were they now? The fact is, Mr. Mayor, we need to evolve, we need to change. And in Kingston and Kensington, things have changed and we need to adapt and move forward. That's the first point I make. The other point I'll make, and I've made it, I'll do it till the sun goes down, is about social justice and opportunity for others. Students, hobos, divorced men and women, all these people too are humans. They can't afford when they're thrown out of their home or have no home to go to, to go into some mansion or live somewhere or live on the street. They choose, sorry. They choose to live in this kind of smaller accommodation, I would call humble beginnings. It's important to have this kind of accommodation, that's what I will say first. Secondly, the third thing, Mr. Mayor, I'll close on the thought. When I was a young man and I was in a in a debate or given an opportunity to donate my heart or a heart transplant to a hobo or to one of the richest men in Australia or one of the great inventors of Australia, I was asked, who would I donate my heart to? I chose, Mr. Mayor, to give it to the hobo because I believed he deserved a second chance. And this is what affordable housing offers people. It offers hope. It offers those people who have nowhere and nowhere to go to six months to at least get their lives together. Please don't discount their lives or their opportunities. I heard one councillor talk about families. Is a family more valuable than a hobo or someone who has nowhere to go to? All of us are humans, we all have feelings. Let us not prioritize, let us not be judgmental. But this is important. Affordable housing is important. When I was the mayor, I had troops of people from Kensington and Kingston that come. And I said, look, if you know me, you know what I'm about. I'm about social justice, about giving everyone a fair go. So I listened, but my views on this, I don't think will change. They may be dented, but they'll never change. Mr. Mayor, I fully support this motion, not because Mattson and Shuri or other Greens may support it, because it's right, it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor, and we also get funding on this.
Should take that comment back.
Which comment was that, Mr. Mayor?
Well said, councillor.
Back to Greens.
Look, I'm just saying the fact is that two Green councillors supported. It wasn't meant to disrupt the way.
Councillors, councillors.
It goes to show that this is important to us all.
Councillors, look, councillor D'Souza has concluded his remarks, so we'll just move on. Councillor Andrews.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I won't be supporting this matter because, you know, we need to listen, we need to listen to the ward councillors. And I said this on the last occasion and I was, I too was disgusted this afternoon when I received an email, which councillor Bowen spoke about. I can't believe we have councillors forwarding emails like that to other councillors to try to get them to vote in a particular way. And I was very disgusted when I saw that email. But we've got councillor Mattson here who who has been the advocate of high density, high rise in 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 Kensington and Kingston. And if this was in his ward, he would not be supporting such thing. And councillor Stavreinos is right. I wish councillor Mattson will be on the next term of council to see whether he would support a VPA in the East Ward when the Coogee Bay Hotel comes to that. It's absolutely disgusting that we have councillors who hide in political parties and vote against their ward councillors. All councillors should should support the people, the councillors who represent their community. It's one thing which I always agree with is that we support the ward councillors. They're the ones that represent this community of Kingston and Kensington. Councillor Luxford is right, K to K has not delivered what its objectives are. You know, K to K was supposed to be councillor Mattson's baby. He was the judge of the K to K competition, he was the instigator of K to K. It was a way which councillor Mattson thought, let's put all the high rise in Kingston and Kensington because it doesn't affect him. And councillor Mattson, you know, was the advocate, was the advocate. And I'll go back 10 years, 15 years, the advocate who started the light rail campaign. Councillor Mattson knew that if light rail came to Randwick, so would density. And this is what we've got today. This is the legacy that councillor Mattson has left us. High density along Anzac Parade as a result of the Greens' policy, which was light rail. And we've got light rail today and what and what's coming with it, high density.
Point of order, point of order.
Thank you. I've received a point of order. Councillor Veach, please state your point of order.
The light rail was paid for and put forward by the New South Wales Government. I believe that's the Liberal Party, not the Greens.
Okay, look, thank you, thank you councillor Veach. I think I that is a point, but thank you, it's a point, but it is it is not a point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The the light rail, for the record, was instigated by the Greens of Randwick Council back when Murray Mattson was the mayor. The Greens of his council instigated light rail. They lobbied, they lobbied the state government for a light rail system to Randwick. And the government eventually listened. They knew that if we got a new transport system, that will bring more density to our area. So it's all right for the Greens to say it was the Liberal state government that bought light rail. It wasn't the history of light rail and look at the minutes.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, thank you councillor Andrews. Okay, thank you, I've just muted you councillor Andrews. Councillor Mattson, could you please unmute yourself and then read your point of order, please?
This is about a voluntary planning agreement. We should be debating what's before us, not this auxiliary or whatever issue.
Thank you, thank you councillor Mattson. I think councillor Andrews is very, very tangentially being relevant, but he is being relevant. But so all I can do is kindly remind him to stick as closely as he reasonably thinks he can to the motion, but he is he is just close enough in my view.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I was just continuing on from other speakers where light rail was mentioned and I thought I'll give the true history of how light rail came about in this city of Randwick. But, Mr. Mayor, I I won't be supporting the VPA because it goes against the objectives of K to K. K to K was to bring, was to bring. K2K was to bring, was to bring, um, a type of development in, in Randwick of our fresco dining, restaurants, community space, um, supermarkets, shopping centre. Um, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any of that yet. All I've seen as a councillor is DA after DA for student accommodation, um, which is not what the objective of K2K was. It was to bring families, two bedroom, three bedroom, possibly four bedroom units into our city. So families can afford to buy a unit, just like living in a house. This has not happened. And, you know, this is going to continue. This precedent has been set to enter into VPA agreements with councils and I can't support this. I support the West Ward councillors because they're the ones that know West Ward better than anyone else.
Okay. Thank you councillor Andrews. Uh, councillor De Rosh, you previously had had your hand up. Am I, is that correct that you no longer want to speak?
Yeah, I, I think pretty much everyone said a little bit of what I wanted to say, so it would just be a repeat, but, um.
Thank, thank you councillor De Rosh. Uh, councillor Roberts, you have your hand raised.
Thank you. Um, can I first ask a question of councillor De Rosh? There's been people speaking for and against. How do you, where's councillor De Rosh's voice?
Oh, at the moment, I'm just, um, at the moment, I'm weighing my option. I don't want councillor to miss, I don't want councillor to miss the boat, but I'm still.
Okay, thank, thank you. Look, I, I, I think that really, yeah, it verges on. Councillor Roberts, please continue.
Well, I'm just curious. He said, people have said all the points I wanted to say, so I just want to know what his position was.
Okay.
Uh, councillor, I, uh, will be supporting the recommendation on the business paper. Uh, the main reason is that what councillor Shuri said, the Land Environment Court have, the Land Environment Court have, um, have approved this matter, uh, as councillor Sedd said, uh, they're about to start construction. Um, if we, so the, 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 the question for me is not, you know, a history lesson. The question for me is what's the matter at hand? And the matter at hand seems to me about $5 million of funding for our council. And if we don't support that tonight, uh, we, we will lose that money and the development will be built anyway. So that is a lot of money that our ratepayers could, could use and put to many valuable uses. So I think we need to be pragmatic about this situation. We can, we can say all the history lessons we want about, uh, about the, the history of the zoning in the area. The bottom line though, is these people have a land environment court approval to build and they're about to build. So are we gonna, um, what are we gonna do about that? So we can, we can, we can stand on moral high ground and, 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 uh, throw $5 million into the ocean? Or, um, we could be pragmatic, work, work our way to maybe change the zonings if you feel that's important to prevent something like this happening in the future. But I think we need to be pragmatic and realistic about this and, uh, work for, uh, getting this voluntary planning agreement through to get that funding. And, uh, imagine what we can do with that, how many playgrounds we could build? How many, uh, how many, uh, courses we could subsidise? What we can do with the environment park in terms of solar panels, you name it. We could do lots of stuff with the millions of dollars we could get from this. And so I won't, I would, I, I'm really tempted to engage with some of the history lessons some councillors have done tonight, uh, but I won't. Uh, that's why, so I'll conclude by saying that I'll be supporting the motion tonight as per those reasons. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you councillors. Um, councillor Mattson is the mover of the motion. Would you like to close?
Certainly. Look councillors, we forget that when we used to resolve big DAs like this a few years ago, we always had to put forward reasons for refusal. And in this case, if it was before us, we wouldn't be able to refuse it because it is in accordance with the LEP that we voted to put into place. It was either K2K or a succession of uncontrolled, single site spot rezonings running up and down between Kensington and the Kensington, and the Kingsford town centres. I, I, K2K was our way of dealing with it. It's done it. Now, what we have left, as I said in my email, is a fiduciary duty. As councillor De Rosh has said, we can use that money. We have an obligation.
Point of order, point of order.
There's no, the councillor has to withdraw that. A fiduciary duty is a legal term, all right? That as a, that he's saying we're like in a position of trust or a director of a company. So what he's, what he's actually saying is he's, he's fettering our vote. And this is the objection I took to the email that was sent earlier. We don't have a fiduciary duty councillor. He must withdraw it because.
I disagree.
Because, if I may finish, um, it, what, what he's arguing for is a fetter, a restriction on every, all 15 councillors', um, freedom to vote as they see, on the merits of this matter as they see fit, and he must withdraw it.
Um, thank you councillor Bowen. Um, what I will do is I will offer councillor Mattson the opportunity to withdraw that comment.
Oh, not at all, Mr Mayor. Look, it's rubbish. I did.
Well, it's not rubbish. It's, he's using a legal term and, and.
Rubbish. It was a term used by the Australian directors.
Councillor Bowen, just to, to be clear, look, whi- while I understand the sentiment, I, I don't think that that is grounds for, for a point of order. However, what I would suggest to councillor Mattson is that he move on, um, and, and speak in, in closing the debate, please.
We have a duty, shall I put it that way, to spend money on behalf of our ratepayers in a wise and planned manner. The spending of this money was planned under local environmental plan number 12. Yes, it was based on K2K, but it's there now. It's the planning law that we work under. And that, this money flows from that. The intent of those clauses in the LEP is to allow this council to insist on extracting infrastructure fees to help our residents in West Ward and to do what every councillor would want to do. And that is to increase affordable housing so that lowly paid nurses, police officers, firemen or other first attendees will be able to live near the places in the eastern suburbs where they are obliged to work. Let's not just run in fear from that term affordable housing. It was once something that I was proud of. I'm surprised that we are so embarrassed about it. I, I don't understand that. But look, let's go back to it. It's the LEP. It's in accordance with the LEP. The court knows it. The court will receive our rejection and the court will move on. Hopefully, uh, the court will help us out and somehow get the money to us. Or the court may decide that we have abandoned, abandoned our own development standard. And that, I would say to councillor Bowen, is actually a good legal concept.
There's no legal concept of abandonment.
Okay.
Yes, it is. It's written in.
Councillors.
So much legal advice, councillor. You know that's not true.
Councillors, councillor Mattson, have you concluded your remark?
It will be the last K2K.
I've abandoned something I haven't.
I've concluded.
Thank you very much. Uh, the debate, uh, now having concluded, I will now, uh, put the motion, but I'll go straight to a division. Mr Kelly, could you please bring up the tally? Okay, councillor Hamilton.
Four.
Councillor Shuri.
Four.
Councillor Nielsen. Councillor Nielsen. Councillor Nielsen.
I'm against. Sorry.
Councillor Veach.
Against.
Councillor Stavreinos.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Singh is absent, I believe. Councillor Andrews.
Against. It's a part of the West Ward councillors.
Councillor Bowen.
Against.
Councillor Mattson.
For.
Mr High Rise.
Councillor Roberts.
Yeah, I'm for for, uh, the low paid workers of our community.
Councillor De Rosh.
For.
Finally, it was affordable.
Councillor D'Souza.
For.
Councillor Sid.
For.
And the mayor is for.
Good on you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I declare that carried. Okay. Okay, we now move to petitions. Are there any petitions?
I'm sure that councillor, um, says back, as councillor.
Councillor Singh, thank you. Councillor Singh's now returned.
Back now. Thank you. Thank you councillor Nielsen. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any petitions? Okay, there being no petitions, I now go to motions pursuant to notice, which were deferred from the 26th of October council meeting. Uh, the first.
Sorry, Mr Mayor.
Mr Mayor, you missed the number of matters.
You're, you're, you're correct. Thank, thank, thank you councillors. I was looking at my run sheet, which is missing it. I should have looked at my business paper. Thank you very much councillors. Um, I now move to, um, Director of Corporate Services reports, CO64/21 Long Term Financial Plan 2021 to 2031, moved by councillor Andrews. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Seconded by councillor Sid. Councillor.
What's he moving?
Well, I'm.
I'm moving the recommended.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Andrews, um, you have four.
Uh, Mr Mayor, I reserve my right to speak. I just commend the, um, long term financial plan of council. Um, and I, I congratulate the general manager, um, for putting this, um, plan to council and, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you. Councillor Sid is the second.
Um, I also commend the, uh, the general manager and the directors and the financial staff. This is a very good report. Um, and it delivers operating surpluses, funds existing service levels, funds, infrastructure renewals, ensure financial stability and financial legacy. So it's a very good report. And I'm looking towards the future with this long term financial plan. So I commend this report.
Thank you. Um, I've just received a text message that councillor Hamilton has had to leave the meeting uh, due to illness, um, and she's an apology for the rest of the meeting. Um, I now move to councillor Singh, who has his hand up.
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a, a minor question to the appropriate officer. We are advised in the report that there is a low cost loan opportunity from T Corp. I just wonder how, how, how low the cost is as compared to the commercial bank rates.
Thank you councillor Singh, through to the general manager or to the director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Uh, the current loan variable rate they're offering us at the moment is 2.15 for 10 years.
Okay. Thank you councillor Singh. Was there anything else you wanted to say?
No, I think that's brilliant, uh, that the council managed to get the T Corp to assist us. Congratulations to the management. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor Singh. Uh, are there any further councillors who would like to speak on the matter? Okay, uh, councillor Andrews, did you want to close?
I'll just put it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, all those in favour?
Aye.
Those against? I declare that carried. Okay, um, we now move, uh, to, uh, we now move to petitions. There being no petitions. Uh, we go to motions pursuant to notice deferred from the 26th of October 2021 council meeting. Uh, the first item is NM74/21.
Seconded.
Notice of motion from councillor Sid, moved councillor Sid and seconded by councillor Nielsen. Councillor Sid, would you please like to address your motion?
No opposition.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So following on from our long term financial plan, um, which, uh, creates a, a not, great opportunity as we're getting out of COVID, that, um, we know, we realise we're having an aging workforce at Randwick. And we're good now that virtually, we have lots of staff who've worked there for a very long time, which is something that's, um, to be commendable because people do enjoy working there. But at the same time, as they grow older, we need to give opportunities to our youth. So this is a way to assist in the economic recovery of our community that we actually seek to give opportunities to the young people in, within our LGA. And I think it's to be, the, the idea that we can re, you know, re-vigorate our pool of young school tradesmen. There's lots of opportunities at council from a varied sort of, we've already given out the, um, uh, scholarships out for engineering, but at another level, there's horticulture, landscaping, concreting, carpentry, painting, childcare. So the opportunities are invaluable. So I really put this to councillors that we give our youth more opportunities and it'd be a fantastic way going forward and another legacy we can have with this council. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. I have councillor Nielsen and then I'll go, I will go to councillor Luxford. Councillor Nielsen is the second of the motion.
Thank you, um, Mayor, and thank you, um, councillor Sid. I think this is an excellent, uh, notice of motion and, uh, very, very good, um, aim for us to, as a council, to continue going forward, particularly enriching our workforce. Um, can I just point out, I think there's a typo in the, um, point B. I think Aboriginal should have a capital A. Um, so if we could just correct that, please. Um, but I think it's also fantastic that you have identified the fact that we should be, uh, looking far more proactively in terms of targeting positions for our Aboriginal candidates. And let's hope that we're successful in that and look forward to us taking on board more apprentices who have an Aboriginal background. I think it would be absolutely fantastic. So I totally commend this, uh, notice of motion.
Thank you. Um, councillor Luxford.
Um, yeah, I, um, support this motion. Um, I think it's a great motion. And hopefully we will have loads of apprentices on board. Um, because, um, I guess I have a soft spot here. My brother was once an apprentice with Randwick Council many, many, many moons ago. And at that time, Randwick Council had quite a few apprentices. And, um, if I'm not mistaken, they actually won an award at the Easter show for having the best display. Um, as well. And I remember when we had people, we had landscape gardeners, horticulturists working in our parks and our parks were outstanding. We used to have a gardener just for the town hall, you know, who also had been an apprentice, um, at our council. And, you know, plied his, his, um, his trade there. And, you know, we had beautiful gardens around. It wasn't just, you know, the old botany council that was able to put flowers everywhere. But somehow along the way, I think it, it has diminished. So I would happily, um, love to see, you know, people plying their, learning their trade at Randwick, staying there and, you know, improving our city, you know? And the only way we will do it is to make sure that our workforce is ready to go into the future. So I totally commend, uh, this motion. And hopefully we win more awards with our apprentices.
Thank you councillor Luxford. Um, councillor D'Souza, you have your hand up?
Yes, yes, Mr Mayor. Thank you. I do commend councillor Sid on this motion. Now, we, over the past few years, have talked about closing the gap, closing the health gap, closing the education gap. And something like this feeds into that. We are now giving our Indigenous people opportunities, apprenticeships. And that's why this is so important. We have a large group of Indigenous people or First Nation people living in the La Perouse area. This motion will allow, give them opportunity and offer them hope. So well done councillor Sid and well done to the council for giving our Indigenous people opportunities. An opportunity to get educated and have an apprenticeship. My father used to say to me, don't give them fish, teach them how to fish. Apprenticeships do just that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. Um, councillor De Rosh, I saw that your hand was previously up. Um, do you want to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Um, I just want to commend, um, you know.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor. I just want to commend, you know, councillor Sid on this motion. I totally support anything to do with apprenticeships. Being at council for over 36 years, I've seen that councils used to have such an intense, hopeful opportunity for kids that knew that they were going to leave school and some knew that they weren't going to be those academics that many of us, you know, wished that they could be. A lot of them, they wanted to be a labourer, they want to be a plumber, they want to be a carpenter. And councils used to do a lot of that. They used to help. And through the years, I think we've lost a lot of that in our youths. That's why I don't mean disrespectful to councillor Nielsen's comment about aborig- targeting Aboriginal kids. I think we should target Aboriginal and all their mates because they're all hanging together and they're looking for the opportunities and they're all want to be inclusive with one another. And when it comes to the word apprenticeships, it's something that many, many kids hope and they believe they can do through a TAFE environment and not having to go to uni where they think their brains are going to get cooked. I'm just saying, you know, so I, I hope we do support this and I hope we do more than what we can to, you know, get the, the young people, you know, motivated and, you know, and hopefully confident in what they want to achieve.
Yeah, yeah, well said.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sid. There being no further speakers, would you like to close the debate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to really, right now, sorry, excuse me, I didn't mention this at the start, but we have some great partnership in opportunities with people like Weave. We've donated more money to them. And they're taking Aboriginal youth off the streets. And to give them an opportunity like this to, to have an apprenticeship is fantastic. So thank you all councillors. So I'll leave you to put it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sid. I'll now put it. All those in favour? All those again?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I declare that carried. We now move to NM75/21, moved by councillor Stavreinos. Do I have a second up?
Seconded, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seconded by councillor Luxford. Okay, councillor Stavreinos?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, the purpose of my motion tonight is to address the concerns of residents who have contacted me in relation to the changes made by council's LEP, to council's LEP and DCP controls for Kingston and Kensington. And the impact that this could have particularly on surrounding streets of Anzac Parade. Now, late last year, the council endorsed K2K and under the DCP, a zero car space requirement was added. And what this means is that under current planning controls, an additional 2,200 new dwellings will be built along the Anzac Parade corridor, of which so far, 1,000 are student accommodation rooms. And under the DCP, not a single car space will need to be provided for these rooms. Mr. Mayor, the student population at the University of New South Wales may never go back to its previous levels due to the pandemic. And the concern that residents have is that these rooms will be occupied by professional people and essential workers who will own cars. And where do we expect these vehicles to be parked? This will surely create greater parking pressures on surrounding streets and this is of great concern to residents. Over the past nine years, Mr. Mayor, I've tried to do whatever I can to alleviate the parking pressures and the concerns of residents. Through parking initiatives, implementing parking, car, car parking areas, trying to, you know, alleviate the loss of the 700 car spaces that we had as a result of the light rail, car share schemes. I've tried to do whatever I can. And now I want to address this issue, you know, should I not be part of the future council? I believe that holding a review of parking policies for Kingston and Kensington would be the right way to go forward. And of course, this should all be done in consultation with residents so that all issues raised can be addressed. I would ask that the council support my motion tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stavreinos. Councillor Luxford is the seconder.
Yeah, I support this motion. Exactly what councillor Stavreinos has said. You know, we're losing more spaces than we're gaining. And already West Kensington is impacted by Victoria Park. And the developments that are in Epsom Road as part of Sydney City because there are no car spaces allocated there either. And those residents parked their cars in Lenthall Street, in Virginia Street, in Milroy, in McDougall, and they walked back to their apartments just under the bridge at the end of Lenthall Street. Resident parking schemes need to be overhauled as well. I believe a review was conducted. The West Ward councillors didn't know about it. We found out, well, I found out after the event by some residents who raised issues with me pertaining to all of that. So I think that we really need to look at how we can manage parking for our residents and for the businesses in the area that, you know, rely on, on people parking to pick up food or whatever it may be. So I think that this review is long overdue.
Thank you, councillor Luxford. Councillor Veach?
Thank you. Yes, I'm very happy to support this motion. There was a couple of K and, the K and one and K into residential parking schemes were recently reviewed and they were actually on the agendas of the recent traffic committee meetings, which I'm not a delegate to the traffic committee, but I did attend those. I did bring forward some concerns of residents. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to win the support of the committee to get the additional parking spaces that were requested. And look, you just have to walk around anywhere in West Ward and there's just no, no parking. You know, the, 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 the report was very detailed report and, you know, without disclosing any, you know, information about the residents, it did show where there were requests for extra parking permits and how many were already in place. And so, you know, the recommendation said on balance, you know, there's enough residential parking spots. You know, supply based on the permits currently issued. But the fact is, when you do go around Westwood, there's nowhere to park. And that's just because there's a lot of construction that is only going to increase, you know, tenfold at least. And, you know, many people are coming into the area and parking their vehicles. Anecdotally, I hear that, it's probably not so much in recent months, but other people have told me that people come into the area if they're doing some sort of regional travel on, from Central Station. So they come and park their cars. They hop on the light rail to, to the Central Station and they hop on their train to, to, to wherever they're, they're going. But pretty much any other inner, is an inner city area, to be quite honest. And any other inner city area like Glebe or Newtown, even almost all the way to Annandale, there's no, it's, everything is timed parking. Everything is timed parking because people come into the area and they need to get to the city. And in our, in our, in West Ward, there's just a lot of development, a lot of happening. So it would have been good to see councillor, the councillor there at the parking traffic committee meetings to advocate, but I will support this motion and we do need more parking spaces in West Ward.
Thank you, councillor Veach. Councillor Andrews.
Yeah, thanks. Can I ask whether the mover will be happy to accept a amendment? Because there was a council resolution going back some time now calling for an investigation for a public car park, a further public car park in Kingsford Town Centre. To, to date, this resolution remains outstanding. And we haven't seen a report come back to council addressing the resolution which was for council to investigate a, a new public car park in Kingsford. So I would ask that a amendment be made calling that a report come back to council as to the status of the proposed car park, public car park.
I'm happy to accept that, Mr. Mayor. I'm happy to accept that. I am because I, I passed that motion some time back in the previous term of council and, and we have not received a report on it and I would like to receive a report.
You know, this is just, this is just like the plaza at Meek Street, which we debated last time, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, the West Ward councillors have fought tirelessly for a plaza and councillor Stavreinos has fought tirelessly for a public car park. And I was happy to support him on that previous occasion. It's like Kingsford has become the forgotten suburb in, in Randwick. And, you know, I sat to feel for councillor Luxford sometimes because she's, she's right. You know, Kingsford is becoming the forgotten suburb in, in Randwick. And it's about time that we did see, you know, the plaza fixed and a new car park. So I'm happy to move that amendment.
Okay, thank you. And not that it's been adopted by councillor Stavreinos. Councillor Sid, I see your hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to comment on point B. I think there was a, and it was myself and I think councillor Stavreinos seconded it, but I'm willing to be clear for it, it was way back in the beginning, that the Rainbow Street Car Park was always meant to be, I'm positive, a 300-spot car park with an agreement when, when the light rail went in. So within that report, I'm not asking to change anything but the amendment. I'm just saying that there needs to be clarification that that still remains the proposal that was put forward, that there's a 300-spot car park in the Rainbow Street development that eventually will go there one day. So I don't know if you want to incorporate that, but, but I'm sure that's part of the plan of management when the light rail was, when we adopted that Rainbow Street Car Park way back when. I'm sure there was a clause that it had to have a car park for at least 300 vehicles in it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Sid. Councillor Stavreinos, I believe you have a suggestion in?
Yeah, look, I'm happy to take that on board. In closing, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say that the traffic committee meetings take place during the day. I have a small business and unfortunately, I'm not able to make those meetings unlike councillor Veach. However, I do often raise the concerns of residents to council's traffic coordinator, Mr. Tony Lehman. And I've made numerous representations to our director of city services to try and target parking issues. Just because I was unable to attend the meeting, it doesn't mean that I don't act on these issues. And here I am tonight, bringing forward a motion to address parking pressures. And in the past, I've done, brought numerous motions forward as a duty, as my duty as a councillor to serve our community. And I'll leave it at that. And I would like to thank all the councillors for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stavreinos. I will now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
All those again?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, we now move to NM76/21, notice of motion from councillor Sid, replace the accessibility mat at Mount Bay Beach. Moved by councillor Sid and seconded by councillor Nielsen. Councillor Sid, would you like to please talk to your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The reason for this motion is that the, the current mat is well-used and appreciated by the people with disabilities and young, even young mothers with prams and young families. However, the mat has had its issues. Storms and high tides have meant that it has to be constantly repaired and maintained. So the purpose of this motion is that, and I'd like to actually thank before I go on, council staff who have repaired the mat again for probably the fourth or fifth time. But unfortunately, because it does suffer when it is close to the water, the, the motion is to find a way that if we can find a way with a, a more resilient method of making the mat at least go to the high tide mark. The Rainbow Club and all the people with disabilities would very much appreciate being able to get to the water. At the moment, we're probably about 20 metres, 30 metres shy of the water. So if we can just find, I know it, it, it might take a little bit more time and I'm not expecting this to happen overnight. But if we could just investigate a mat that could make it to the high, the high tide mark and at least not need to be repaired constantly due to the, the tides and the storms down there. So I just hope councillors that we, for the, all the people that, we, we are, our council does have a sense of community and everyone deserves, we are surrounded by water and every single person in our community deserves to have a chance to swim in that water. So I put this to you councillors.
Councillor Sid, thank you. Councillor Nielsen is the seconder.
Yes, I'm just really pleased with this motion that's been put forward by councillor Sid. I was actually mayor, I had the privilege of being mayor when we unveiled this mat and the difference it's made to so many people was just unbelievable. And the people I met who have been able to take advantage of this mat is just, it just warms your heart, makes you so pleased to be a member of the RAC City Council. But I do agree that we need to do more. I think the motion is very well put. I totally agree with the issue about the resilience of the mat, particularly to the high watermark. Though the comments that councillor Sid made about our staff who've done so much to repair, get it back and keep it operating. So we want to make sure that it's in top knot condition. And any way that we can move forward to keep this mat in operation, but in a better form of operation by, as the mover said, councillor Sid, that more resilient mat, particularly going by watermark in a much more important way. So, and in some ways to the low watermark. So it's a tricky one. So I totally commend this and let's look forward to a really fantastic state-of-the-art new mat.
Thank you, councillor Nielsen. As we've only had-
Councillor D'Souza.
Yeah, so just before that, as we've only had two for, we haven't had two further speakers. I can't yet put it. So I'll go to councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, councillor Nielsen saying she was the mayor that opened or when the mat was put down. I was the mayor that was approached by the Rainbow Club and the Murray Rose Ocean Swim Organisation. And it wasn't a hard decision to make because those that know me know my core beliefs, equity, social justice and a fair go for all. It fitted just right in. And I fully support this motion because it continues to do good for the community. I remember going down to the Ocean Swim once and seeing all those happy pavers, all those people with lesser ability getting involved. This is what community is all about. And it doesn't matter how many times we have to repair that mat because this Malabar beach is a cove. And it's constantly the victim of tidal movement. Rocks are thrown around, sand is pushed around. The mat is sometimes destroyed. It needs replenishment. I support this motion because it does good and it gives everyone the same opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor DeRosa.
I totally support this motion. I've always been very forthcoming, writing to the relevant council directors or raising it at council about people with disabilities or less abilities to get into the, into our beaches. A lot of people talk about our beaches not being manned or, sorry, not being operated by whatever officially. But one thing that we realise is so often, more than not, a lot of us councillors, and Danny, you've been with me and so have you, Anthony and Noel, when people are just saying, think of us that's got a wheelchair, think of us that's got a few walking sticks, we can't get any further. What I'm saying is, yes, we've got to fix this, but what I need to sort of see or like to see happen even more so, not about who was mayor or anything, but just something in there that says that the minute that that mat is no longer seen to be adequate or sufficient or, or safe enough that council automatically, you know, through, does the work to repair it on an, on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, councillor DeRosa. Before I put this, I would just like to suggest through to the mover of the motion that he incorporate the words that council investigate the provision of a floating wheelchair secured at the beach within a, an enclosure with an MLAC key in line with other beaches. That has been a suggestion which has been put to me in the past. That would simply be part of the investigation as part of the report, but that's a matter for the mover of the motion.
As I say, that's my report.
Mr. Mayor, I think that has been put and there was a reason why, but I can't remember why. But I'm quite happy to put it there and that investigation might remind us why that couldn't happen originally. But, but it's a very good, I'll add that to it.
That should be point C, shouldn't it?
Yeah, as point C.
Okay, I'll just, I don't, I don't think we need to wait for Mr. Kelly, just in relation to that. I think that's pretty clear. All those in favour of the motion is moved by councillor Sid?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, notice of motion, NM7721, notice of motion from councillor Mattson, call for a gas, New South Wales Gas Substitution Roadmap. Before I. Okay, thank you. Before I, I will speak to that in a second. Before I call on the move of the motion, I'd just like to inform that councillor Stavreinos has left the meeting due to illness. I will now prior to the mover, I'll just call for a mover in a second and then I will ask councillor Stavreinos to then, it's not councillor Stavreinos, councillor Roberts to speak to his point of order. So moved by councillor Mattson, seconded by councillor Veitch. Councillor Roberts, could you please just outline your point of order, please?
The point of order is the same as in the past. It's got nothing to do with council. This is, this is a, not a council issue. It might have made councillor Stavreinos sick, frankly. So I, I'm not expecting you to say this is out of order, Mr. Mayor. If you thought it was, you probably wouldn't have agreed to put it on the agenda. But I just need to, you know, call, call this out. This has clearly got nothing to do with council and it's about wasting another 45 minutes of our time tonight. And it was another motion exactly like this that caused us to meet tonight because we were forced to go through to midnight. So do you want to just talk about this now for the next hour? Or shall we get on to some real business?
Thank you councillor Roberts.
Just put it.
Okay, yeah, thank, thank you councillor Roberts.
Yeah, I agree. The matter should be put. I second the motion, it be put.
Okay, thank, thank you councillor Roberts. In relation to the point of order, while I'm very sympathetic to the frustration, I don't find that there is anywhere within the code of meeting practice which would allow me in order to rule it out of order. I would remind councillors that there are provisions in there to put a matter after if there've been two speakers for and two against. That's up to any, any councillor in order to move that at the appropriate time. But I don't believe that there is any grounds for me to rule this out of order. In particular, the fact that we have debated many matters such as this and has become the, at least the recent practice of Randwick Council. So as such, councillor Mattson, if you could please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, as we all know, the Prime Minister's off to Glasgow. He's promising that Australia will achieve net zero emissions by 250. A lot of people are saying, how? Where's the plan? Where's the detail? How will places like LGA's, like Randwick City Council be defended against high rises, high sea rises, against provisions, against heavy storms, wild weather events and whatever? Well, a very interesting model has come out from the CSIRO and Planet Works. They put forward three scenarios in which they've said, okay, if we accept that we're going to have net zero emissions by 250, one of the ways under three different scenarios they've run, they would suggest that ruling out, ending the gas industry would be one substantial way, a significant way in each of those scenarios, that we could actually get to net zero emissions by 250. Look, I understand you want to get on with the meeting, okay. But just say that this is an historic time. We do need to provide from the local grassroots level feedback to the federal government as to what the grassroots, what the people of Australia really want in terms of speaking out at this historic time on climate change issues. It's the thing that unites the nation. It's the thing that's going to bring us all down and impact on all of us. So I would ask for support for this type of motion.
Thank you councillor Mattson, councillor Veitch.
Thank you. And I commend councillor Mattson for putting, bringing forward this motion. It is an historic time and it is an historic opportunity that we can't afford to ignore. We do live in the Randwick Council area, but we're all part of a much broader community, a national community and an international community. And we all need to work together to get some real change that will benefit everyone. Moving away from gas actually offers one of the best ways to meet our 2050 targets. And for those of us who support a 2030 target, it meets those as well. Because while gas produces, is actually 120 times more potent than coal, the emissions from gas are 120 times more potent greenhouse gas emissions than coal. However, so they're, they're extremely dangerous, extremely dangerous. However, while emissions from coal, burning fossil fuels such as coal remain in the atmosphere for around 100 years, the emissions from methane only last around 12. So if you take that change to cut gas emissions, you can make a very significant impact in the short term, which is what all of the scientists who have authored the IPCC report have been recommending. Thousands of scientists from all over the world are saying we need to take immediate action. This is action that as a council, we can take today to put this to the local government conference and say, this will have an effect. This is a potent contributor to greenhouse gas emissions, but we can do something now that will benefit our children and our grandchildren and the entire planet. This is really significant, councillors. We need to move, we've just adopted a sustainable procurement policy. And, you know, we need to move away from these dangerous fossil fuels. All the gas that is being researched now, that's being investigated now is unconventional. It's coming from unconventional sources. That's why they're looking at fracking in places like the Pilger Forest. You've probably heard that they're looking at getting gas from around the, the 12 Apostles down in Victoria. You know, they're looking at getting gas from remote communities in the Northern Territory, from offshore, places along the East Coast, even off, off the East Coast of Sydney. These are not places some far away. They're places that have impacts. They're places we like to visit. They're the home of really endangered ecological communities. We have a chance to act now. Gas is very expensive, very, very expensive on many levels, not only to purchase, but it's, it's a huge cost to our environment. We can make a statement tonight. This is going to the local government conference and we can join with many, many people in our community who take climate change and the environment very seriously and say, we stand in solidarity with you and, and we take the future of our planet seriously. And I hope you will support the motion.
Thank you. Councillor Sid, I see your hand up. I'm assuming in light of previous comments that you're just registering your opposition for the purposes of debate. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Against the motion.
Okay. Did you want to speak to it or are you just registering it?
Yes. The reasons why I'm speaking against it, because, Mr. Mayor, that two months ago, we wrote to the minister for the environment and based on three crucial bits of evidence that we're fighting the incinerator at Matreville. And one of them is that because they use gas, it's a better alternative than waste to energy than using waste. If we ban gas, the paper mill needs to fire up the incinerator and it can only do it two ways. It's either going to burn gas or it's going to burn rubbish. So if we decide tonight that we're going to.
Point of order, sorry, point of order.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Veitch.
There are.
So thank you councillor Andrews.
To waste to energy. And gas, it's renewable energy. And that is what the proponents of no more incinerators, they don't, they also support a circular economy.
It's councillor. Thank you. Okay. You're all on mute. There has been a practice of points of order which have not been points of order. Look, as the chair, what I would kindly remind everyone is if you have a point of order, it actually has to be a real point of order. It can't be an opportunity in order to make a further debating point. So councillor Sid, can you please continue? You're on mute. You're on mute councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, you're on mute.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. So the EPA and the chief scientist said that gas is a better alternative to, to burn the incinerator. To, they need to have, create steam and you have to have a fire and you've had to create that fire somehow. So you've got to boil water to create steam. And at the moment, they're using gas, which the EPA has said is a better alternative. And the chief scientist has said it's a better alternative. If they don't have an alternative, the only thing they have at their means will be the waste. And that means our whole argument will be defeated. So unfortunately, I can't support this because I, I am in support of banning that incinerator at Matreville on behalf of the people of the South Ward. I'm sorry.
Right with you, right with you.
But I can't support, seeing that the chief scientist and the EPA have said it's a better use, I'll be contradicting what I wrote to the minister only just two months ago, that to, to ask him, to plead with him that based on three conditions, that incineration should not be built. And one of them was the use of gas as a better alternative than waste to energy. So on that point, I can't support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Sid.
Well said, Daddy.
Councillor Roberts, in light of your previous comments, I'm assuming that you're simply moving formal opposition in order to put it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. There have now been two speakers for and two against.
Actually, I would like to speak, obviously.
Okay, councillor Roberts, you may speak as no one has put it.
Thank you. I, I won't be supporting this motion, Mr. Mayor. Now, the councillor Mattson said, oh, you know, we need to become carbon neutral. One way is to end the gas industry. Okay, that's, that's true. That is one way, you know. Another way is we mandate that we have blackouts. Yep, that's another way. There's actually a million ways we can skin that cat, councillors. And destroying a gas industry in very short period of time is not probably a good way to go. So on that basis, simply by that, and in the backdrop that we have committed to net zero by 2050, the centre-right side of politics has committed to net zero by 2050. So no matter who's governing, we will be net zero by 2050. Now, it's going to be, not too sure how that cat is going to be skinned, but it will be done. And I suggest ending the gas industry, as councillor Mattson said, within the next five to 10 years is prob, there's probably smarter and better ways to do it. There's probably better ways to do it in terms of saving people's jobs and livelihoods. And frankly, I think people would expect better than having their gas stoves ripped out of their houses in about five or 10 years' time for the better good. Okay. So this, this, this motion, just on its merits, is not good. And I would just like to take this opportunity to give the Greens councillors in attendance a bit of a science lesson. So methane, when it's burnt, it, it generates electricity and energy and it emits carbon dioxide. So in fact, that's about half the carbon dioxide emitted by coal. So methane by itself is a very bad greenhouse gas. That is true. That's if methane is emitted into the atmosphere as methane. And that's why you hear about the greenies saying we should cull all cattle because they, they belch methane into the atmosphere. So we should mandate that people can't eat red meat in the future because methane is a very strong greenhouse gas in, by, in and of by itself. But the gas industry actually burns gas, councillors. The methane is destroyed. It's burnt and it creates carbon dioxide in the process and it creates energy. And that carbon dioxide goes into the atmosphere as a greenhouse gas and generates global, the global greenhouse effect. So I totally refute councillor Veitch's assertion tonight that it's 120 times worse. Well, in fact, it's actually a cleaner burning gas. It emits half the carbon dioxide for the same amount of energy created as coal. So it is actually an excellent transition fuel to use as we reduce our greenhouse emissions into the atmosphere over time. Now, the other thing I'd like to say, I'd like to teach you, especially the Greens councillors, is that you can actually manufacture methane from the atmosphere. And if you can do that and then burn methane to create energy, the carbon dioxide that that generates.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, thank.
No.
Councillor Roberts, councillor Roberts.
He's just grandstanding and trying to provide what he considers to be scientific information. But he's not actually speaking to the motion.
Okay.
Okay, so.
This isn't about burping cows.
Thank you. On the point of order, I think councillor Shuri makes a very good point that you are very much straying from the motion. You're barely relevant to it. Could I kindly remind you councillor Roberts to speak to it? And thank you.
I'm, okay, what I'm saying is methane that is manufactured from the atmosphere is methane that's carbon neutral. So if we destroy all our gas generating power plants, we could feed it with, with carbon neutral methane, create electricity and not add any net carbon to the atmosphere. So why would you destroy all those gas-fired power stations? When you can, when you can pull the carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere, take the carbon, throw it with some hydrogens and you've got methane again. You know, so why would you destroy gas-fired power stations?
Councillor Roberts.
You guys are out of touch.
This is asking for a roadmap.
Okay, thank, thank councillor Leamy. Councillors, thank you, thank you. Councillor Roberts, in light of the amount of time we've taken, are you concluding your remarks or is that complete?
That's complete.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Roberts. Councillor Mattson to close.
Look, you're being, you're proposing to us two competing evils, greenhouse emissions from gas and waste to fuel incineration itself. They're both bad industries. They're both bad industrial models. What we really need is a shift to renewables. Any industry should be able to run itself on renewables. And what about hydrogen? That's being talked about as a new potential answer to climate change. And I would put my money in that before I would put it in gas, in burning waste in suburbs or fighting burping cows. Really, I would.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Mattson. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour of it?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay.
No.
Okay, sorry. Okay, thank you. There was a call for a division. As such, I will go around the horseshoe. I believe councillor Hamilton is, has left. Councillor Shuri.
Four.
Councillor Nielsen.
Four.
Councillor Veitch.
Four.
Councillor Stavreinos is left. Councillor Luxford.
No.
Councillor Singh.
No.
Councillor Andrews.
No.
Councillor Bowen.
No.
Councillor Mattson.
Four.
Councillor Roberts.
Against.
Councillor De Rocha.
No.
Councillor De Souza.
No.
Councillor Sid.
Against.
Okay, councillor Parker is against. So I declare that lost. Okay, thank you. We now move to, well, actually, before we do that, could I just clarify councillor Mattson, just for the benefit of the meeting, on the paper is NM79/21, that that is, was included on the business paper as an error and should not be included. Is that correct councillor Mattson?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. So as such, I will strike it from the paper and we will move to the next item, which is NM80/21, notice of motion from councillor Roberts, sister city arrangements, moved by councillor Roberts. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Can I ask? Okay, can I ask who has seconded that? I just couldn't.
That's Bowen.
Okay, moved by councillor Bowen, sorry, moved by councillor Roberts and seconded by councillor Bowen.
I also have a question, Mr Mayor, that perhaps I could lead off with. I know councillor Roberts gets the opportunity to speak first, but I've just got a question.
Okay, well, while unorthodox, I will allow it. Councillor Bowen, your question.
Yeah, thank you, I guess to the general manager, Mr Mayor. General manager, I understood that these sort of, the whole regime of sister cities was now governed by effectively the Minister for Foreign Affairs and then an application had to be made in relation to existing sister cities. And I just wanted to know if, if that was the case and, and would be required also for any proposed new sister cities. And I just wanted to know whether that was the case in relation to the sister city relationship with Hangzhou.
Three, Mr Mayor, I'll have to take that one on notice.
Oh, okay, sorry, I meant to send an email today. But that's my understanding, just from a quick, if I may, I know the move, well, I'll just let the mover speak, sorry. Because I think there is a whole regulatory framework about these things now. Came in, I think during the middle of the year.
And that if, I have a question, sorry, and then councillor Roberts is, oh councillor Roberts, sorry, I'm invading your post, but do you still work for a federal parliamentarian?
Yes.
Good to do that.
So you need to declare something, don't you?
Well, this matters about sister city arrangements in the city of Ramick. So that's a person-to-person, city-to-city relationship. So I'm, I think it's a matter that needs to be raised at all.
Well, I think in relation to the point that councillor Bowen made, and I hadn't thought of that.
Can I speak to that, just, just quickly? I don't think he does actually. Because my understanding is that there is a, it was legislation passed in the middle of the year about foreign arrangement schemes. And it, it was to address, for example, the Belt and Road initiative that was controversial in Victoria, but also sister city relationship councils. And I think it would have a bearing on this motion because my understanding is that a, and I was sort of intending maybe to move something similar in an amended way because I support the general thrust of the motion. But my understanding is that if a sister city arrangement was not registered by a certain date in June, it would be invalidated. And that any, and, and so it may be that our sister city relationships are invalidated. I, that's just from my quick research of the foreign arrangement scheme.
Part of the report maybe?
Well, yeah, I'm happy with that. I, well, yeah, I've got no difficulty with that, but I thought maybe.
Councillor Bowen is, is correct. I've also read that councillor Bowen.
Yeah, could, could I, could I just suggest, and I know there are a whole bunch of comments, I'll get councillor Bowen to finish and then I will actually move to councillor Roberts to actually move his motion and then, and we can have some of this discussion in the substantive debate.
Well, what I was going to suggest was that, that if, if it is, well, if it is invalidated, that we just simply note that it's invalid and, you know, leave it at that. But, but if not, maybe think about, you know, withdrawing the application or whatever you have to do. I'm just a bit mindful, I support the motion. I, I don't quite agree with how it's expressed because it talks about, you know, there's deterioration of foreign relations and things like that. And, you know, I'm mindful of our role as a council. And I, I do think we need to be careful about where we, you know, we, we make such arrangements and there is good reason, very good reason to review this particular one, I believe. However, if it's, you know, if we can deal with it in a, in a neat way, which I suspect we may be able to in relation to that arrangement, that I think that would be good for everyone. But yeah, anyway, that's, that's, that's what I was going with that.
Councillor Bowen, in light of the fact that councillor Roberts has not yet actually spoken properly for the move to the motion, what, what I will then do is hand to him where he can either move what is on the paper or he has the opportunity to move it in an amended fashion in light of your, your comment.
Sure thing.
Councillor Roberts.
Yes, so this, this motion went through many different versions, I have to say, because, because of the issues that councillor Bowen mentioned. So I'm happy to consider amendments. But I'll table it as it is. To keep it quite clean, I was considering maybe deleting part C entirely and just sort of keep it clean and sharp on A and B. But, but I think it's important maybe that, you know, we, we recognise the situation and try and use our unique connection to, you know, promote person-to-person relationships. So I thought it'd be good to put that in, but I think it could be good to take it out as well. But I'll just speak to motion and if anyone wants to maybe amend it, that would be good. But councillors, the sister city arrangement that council currently enjoys, though it's probably somewhat dormant at the moment, is international and domestic. And the international arrangements are quite Eurocentric. There's three sister cities in Europe and one in Asia. The three in, in Europe is the UK, France and Greece. And the one in, the one in Asia is in China, Hangzhou, I think, or Hangzhou. Thank you. And I, I feel this isn't reflective of the diversity that we enjoy here in Ramick. And so I think it's probably high time we, we had a look at balancing that out. And so I think we should look at a couple more opportunities in Asia. I think India is a wonderful choice. It's, it's a, it's a beautiful, huge country, they've named the ocean after it. And it's got wonderful history. I think councillor De Souza was born there. Goa is a wonderful part of India. And the other, the other option, I think the excellent choice would be Taiwan because it's a fellow island democracy that has pretty much the same population as Australia. So it's a 25 million person island democracy in the Pacific Ocean. And, you know, they're, they're an inspiration frankly. So I was thinking those two choices, India and Tai, and Taiwan. And then, and then moving forward from there. And then inserted part C, just to reiterate our strong commitment to Hangzhou and the people of Hangzhou. And I hope that we can promote the person-to-person relationships to, to boost the relationship as much as we can in our limited capacity as local councils. But the main, main thrust of the motion is just to update and modernise our sister city relationships. Thanks councillors.
Amendment, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. There is an amendment from councillor Singh.
Oh, thank you, Mr Mayor. If the mover and the second of the motion would agree to what I'm going to propose under part A, that we include Indonesia. Now, I was doing my research today and I was surprised that Indonesia with a population of 277 million people and according to a report by PWC called The World in 2050, in Indonesia we have a population of 300 million people and going to be the fourth largest economy in 2050. And yet, according to this list that I've Googled, that there are only two Australian cities, i.e. Palmerstone and Darwin, that have sister city relationship with Indonesia. Think about Bali, think about Bali.
I think that's a wonderful addition, so.
Mr Mayor, can I second that amendment and then speak on it, please?
I've agreed to it.
Oh, but I'd actually, well then I've got to, because I'd want to put a caveat in the amendment because I agree with councillor Singh, but I, and for that reason, because the actual consular is in Marubra and there is a lot of Indonesian people who live in our area and go to the university. So I understand that tremendously, the same with Malaysia, same with just about. But I looked up the census figures from the last census we had. There's only 433 people of Taiwanese background who live in Ramick, LDA. So it's more of a question to the mover, I just don't understand why out of, it doesn't even appear, it's virtually last in the list of national health. India comes in at number 10, which I can understand. But I wouldn't understand with all the relationships we've got through the Bali memorial etcetera, why cities within Bali wouldn't have been accepted. We've got great relationship with the Malaysians as well.
As I said councillor, I'm, I'm happy to include Indonesia. I'm reluctant to have an endless list, you know, to include everyone.
Oh, but that's what I mean, if I was to change the amendment, I would take Taiwan, Taiwan out and include Indonesia and India.
I can't accept taking Taiwan out.
Okay, well that's what I was going to say, okay. Well then, I'll move an amendment then that we remove Taiwan.
Okay, thank you. Just to be clear.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, is there a second?
Okay, well I don't have one, I don't have.
Okay, that lapses.
No, 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 I, I would second it, but I would ask councillor Sid as the mover of the amendment if he would consider removing point C.
Exactly, exactly, so, sorry, thank you councillor Biggs. So the amendment would read to remove Taiwan and to remove point C.
Speaking to the amendment, Mr Mayor.
I'll speak against it.
Thank you, so we have the mover of the amendment firstly. Councillor Sid, is there anything further that you need to say as the mover of the amendment?
No, so would read, A and B would read the same with the removal of Taiwan and no point C. That's simply as, as it happens.
That's okay, thank you councillor Veitch.
Yeah, I thank councillor Sid for moving this amendment. I think it's appropriate and also to councillor Singh for suggesting, making the suggestion of Indonesia, which I, I support. And yeah, I hope councillors will support this amendment, thank you.
Thank you, are there any further speakers on this particular amendment?
Yes, councillor Mattson.
Thank you councillor Mattson.
Look, I would much, I would have preferred simply to remove point C and left A as it was, referring to Taiwan, India and Indonesia. I think it is open for us to form sister city relations with cities in both of those countries, but I thought it would have been a real mistake, given the present international tension for us as a local council to put up a motion referring to both Taiwan and to China. I think we could get ourselves into a lot of trouble doing that. So yes, I'm good, I'm good with seeing clause C go, I think we might find ourselves.
I could support that councillor, yeah.
Well, I then would then give my support to retaining the present wording of point A, drop point C. So I think I will vote against the amendment as it's written. I, I think it's quite open to us to have a sister city relationship with a town or city in Taiwan.
I'd like to speak against.
Okay, thank you councillor Roberts to speak against the amendment.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'll foreshadow that if the amendment fails, that I will amend my own motion to delete part C and include Indonesia. And that's what I sort of mentioned right at the beginning of this evening's conversation. I was, I had issues with part C. I think it's important that, that we include Taiwan and India and Indonesia. We can't, we, we can't just sit back and watch a fellow democracy be put under intense pressure and they feel quite alone and isolated, I would feel and I suspect. And we, we need to do what we can, you know, we can't do much. I've been sitting back personally for 12 months just watching the situation and I think, what can I do? We can't do much as a council, can't do much as an individual. But you know, what we can do is we could reach out to a city in Taiwan, assuming that those issues that councillor Bowen brought up about the, the mechanics of that, assuming it's possible. I think we should reach out, identify a city in Taiwan, potentially a coastal city, maybe with a, with a university, maybe and also a health precinct. And, you know, start a relationship with such a city. I think, I think that would, that would think it would be wonderful. And, and it would be a small thing for us to make that connection. So I cannot support this motion. I think it's important at this point in time, considering the, the current situation, that, you know, this is a small thing that we could do and it's an opportunity for us to stand up and make, make a small difference and not turn our back on the situation. So I can't support the amendment.
Okay, thank you councillor Roberts. Councillor Bowen, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you want to speak to the amendment or was, are you foreshadowing something?
Yeah, look, I'll foreshadow something, but I'll also speak to the amendment. I'm happy, I think with, yeah, I don't support the amendment in the form it's in. I think we should have A as it was expressed, but I, I don't know if anyone's been watching the chat, but there's some helpful information there from the general manager. And it's my understanding, and I think I'm in agreement with the general manager, that because a sister city relationship is non-core, there is a notification process. And it's not clear whether we've given the notification and what the status of the sister city relationship that we have and of ones that might be of some concern to us. So I would add a point C, I think the current point C, I understand the sentiment, but I, you know, I think we need to be tread carefully. So I think it's appropriate that the, the proposed point C go out. But if we add a point C, that a report be brought back to council as to the status of the existing sister city relationships, unfortunate term too, although I think, pursuant to the legislation, which I'm just trying to bring up.
Point of order.
The foreign, I think.
Order.
Well.
Thank you, no, thank you councillor Singh. Point of order, you can have an amendment on an amendment at the same time. I believe councillor, councillor Bowen is foreshadowing an amendment. All right, foreshadowing.
You might, you might, I think you'll like it Ted, I really do.
Yeah, I know that, it's confusing.
No, I understand, but I, but under the foreign states.
Mr Mayor, we need to vote on the amendment.
Councillor Singh, thank you. Councillor Bowen is well within his rights to foreshadow an amendment. Mr Kelly, just, did you delete those words or did you simply copy them? Just so that councillors can have a clear idea as to what is being foreshadowed so that we can understand that were the amendment to fail, what the next amendment which we would move to before we return to the motion was.
Yeah, that a report be booked at the council on the status of existing sister city relationships pursuant to the Foreign Relations, open bracket, State and Territory Arrangements, close bracket, Act.
It's a good one councillor Bowen.
Sorry?
It's a good one, yeah.
Well, I told you you'd like it Ted. And then, and then council determine which of those sisters, and council determine which of those sister city relationships it wishes to give formal notification to the foreign minister of, under the act. And that way councillors, if I can, and I, you know, I, I would be happy for that to be the motion, but anyway, I, I can support A and B and I foreshadow that as C. But I can just quickly talk, the idea is if there's something we're not happy with, not comfortable about it, we can, we can, we can get rid of it with it, but without hopefully causing a ripple with anyone. And that, that's the idea. It's probably, obviously it'd be something for the next council. But I just think we need to be so careful about these sorts of things. We need to be mindful of our own community, but we also need to be mindful of our, and all its diversity and also of the role of the council as the third tier of government. And that way, but you know, we also, and, and, you know, I think there's a lot of cynicism about sister city relationships, right or wrong. And so it's probably a good time to have a, a review of it anyway. So anyway, that's my foreshadowed amendment. If anyone wants to pick it up and put it in their amendment, I'm happy with it.
Okay, thank, thank, no, thank you, thank you. So, so just to be clear, just, just to be clear, we have an amendment in front of us which is moved by councillor Sid and councillor Veitch. Okay, are there any further speakers on? Okay, are there any further speakers on councillor Sedd?
Mister Mayor, what I'll do with the interest of getting through this very logically quickly. Now, what I'm doing is removing the amendment.
Thank you.
You're now withdrawing the amendment.
Yeah, as long as councillor Veitch is okay, I'm withdrawing the amendment, my amendment.
Okay.
Okay, okay, I'm happy to accept the foreshadowed amendment, Mister Mayor.
Put on your man.
Okay, thank you. And just for the benefit of the meeting, does, now having accepted this particular amendment, councillor Roberts. No, no, thank you, so part B is deleted. Does your now slightly amended motion include, include sister city in Taiwan and Indonesia? India and Indonesia?
Yes.
Okay, right.
What about part C councillor Roberts?
I'm happy to delete part C, the original part.
That is a sensible move.
I think so too.
Because we shouldn't link that Chinese city with Taiwan.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got to do it separately.
Very careful.
Okay, councillors, are there any further speakers?
Yeah, I wish to speak in opposition to the whole thing, please.
Okay, thank you councillor Nielsen, councillor Nielsen.
I just think that this calls to us to, is calling on us.
Point of order, point of order.
I'm speaking again.
So thank you councillor Roberts.
I have a point of order, just in terms of the wording of the motion. I think the original part Bs has disappeared. Currently, the report is just a legalistic report. We want to report in terms of the feasibility.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
And what was the original point B?
Bring back the report on the feasibility of such an expansion.
Or full report on sisters. No.
If you think part B encompasses the old part B, that's fine.
I think it does.
Okay, all right, all good.
Okay, thank you councillor Nielsen.
Yes, councillors, I do not think that we as councillors should be entering into what are our opinions as to foreign policy in a reaction to what is currently going on around the world. I also do not think it's appropriate at all. I'm not sure who's probably in the background there. But whoever is going to be the new councillor and new council, they are being asked to accept.
All right, thank you councillor, councillor Hamilton, just one second, thank you. Okay, I've now muted all participants. Councillor Hamilton, can you please now unmute yourself? Thank you.
It's councillor Nielsen speaking.
No, sorry, sorry councillor Nielsen, my apologies. Councillor Nielsen, can you please unmute yourself? I was just trying to stop the interruption.
You can't see my beautiful blonde hair.
My apologies.
Oh dear, oh dear.
I just want to say that I don't think it's appropriate for us at a council meeting, which is virtually the end of our term, however well intentioned this may or may not be. I do not think it's the appropriate time for us to be entering into any sort of new relationships because we have no idea who the new councillors are going to be. Hopefully some of us who are running for reelection will win the reelection. So I would much prefer that we defer this matter until the new council comes on board, during which time the general manager can get the updated information and it can come to a briefing.
Thank, thank you councillor Nielsen, is that a, an amendment, a proposed amendment?
It is.
Okay, thank you, is there a second for that amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. So just to, for Mister, Mister Kelly, or at least my hearing of that and councillor Nielsen, please interrupt me. The proposed amendment is to add, to substitute all words and that this matter be deferred for consideration by the newly elected council and that this be the subject of a briefing.
Exactly, and with obviously the updated information from the general manager.
Thank, thank you councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, would you like to speak?
Point of order, Mister Mayor.
Yes, thank you councillor Singh.
I think what councillor Roberts said earlier was right. The removal of paragraph, of the original paragraph, paragraph B has now thrown confusion to the original intent of the motion. By reading the motion as, as it stands now, it gives the wrong impression. What, what paragraph A is trying to do is to give in principle support, if that's adopted tonight. And the original paragraph B is to get a report from our general manager about the feasibility of that, the inclusion of that three, of cities from the three countries. Without that, it causes a lot of confusion. As I can see now why councillor Nielsen and councillor Veitch is moving the amendment.
Okay, thank you councillor Singh, what I will do.
Can we insert that?
No, no.
Original motion.
Okay, thank you, to begin. So the first item is that there is a, an amendment which is in front of us. That is what we're currently moving. Any questions and confusion as to the status of the motion, we will then deal with after that. And the reason why I would suggest that is because the amendment may be carried and will subsume the motion, meaning that any confusion of that may be resolved by virtue of the amendment becoming the motion. So any confusion around that we will deal with after we've dealt with the amendment.
I'll speak with you.
Okay, thank you councillor Nielsen, councillor Veitch, would you like to now speak to the amendment?
I think councillor Nielsen has, you know, put this forward very well. I do support this amendment. I think she's made a very good point that we would be committing a newly elected council to a particular direction which may, may or may not, you know, we don't know, be sympathetic to a newly elected council. I think it's appropriate that we do receive a report and a briefing and discuss the issue. But, and that, but this is not the right time, so I support the amendment, thank you.
Thank you, I'll now go to councillor Roberts speaking against the amendment.
Yeah, I speak against the amendment. I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Singh said, that the, the motion actually is quite limited in its scope. It says to bring back a report on the feasibility of such an expansion. And we won't make any decision until that, till that point. So it's actually quite limited, this motion. On another matter, the, the mover, the amender, the movement, the mover of the amendment said this should be a matter for the next council. Well, that suggests that all us councillors are lame ducks. And I disagree entirely with that. We are elected by our community to make decisions. And that's why we are at this meeting tonight. So it doesn't matter if it's the start of the term or at the end of the term. We're here to make decisions on our community, to the benefit of our community. So I won't be supporting the assertion that I'm a lame duck councillor. And frankly, we all know that the new council can move whatever it wants in the new term. So there actually is no commitment to the new council. So on those, on those bases, I won't be supporting the amendment.
Okay, thank you councillor Roberts. With the indulgence of the meeting, because of the difficulty of the online format, were this a physical meeting, I would leave the chair in order to speak. But by virtue of the difficulty of doing that in an online format, with the approval of, or the indulgence of the meeting, I'd now like to speak on the motion. Does anyone have any strong objections to that? Otherwise I will leave the chair, there may be a delay in doing that.
All good.
No, please.
Okay, thank you, if there's no objection, look.
Doesn't, doesn't, that just doesn't, as a matter of formality, deputy mayor then have the chair?
Under, where, where there objection to, to me speaking from the chair, then yes.
I'm not, I'm not objecting, I'm not objecting.
No, okay, thank you. If there's no objection, I'll speak from the chair, but I do accept that it is unusual. It's just as it relates to the online format. Councillors, I, I very firmly support this motion and I, the amendment do not support this particular motion as moved by councillor Roberts. I think that the amendment proposes a very reasonable, sensible middle ground in terms of providing us, one, with the information as to what our actual options are in relation to sister city arrangements, which I think is very, very important. The other point why I am also far more comfortable with the amendment as opposed to the motion as moved by councillor Roberts are the particular sensitivities around Australian foreign policy at the, at the current moment and the ability to implicate council in what is fundamentally a foreign policy decision. Prior to even making any of those, what could potentially be a major involvement of council in foreign affairs, I think it would be very prudent of us to actually understand what we can and cannot do prior to making that decision. As such, I support councillor Nielsen's amendment rather than providing in principle support in order to expanding our sister sitting arrangements without knowing whether or not we can in fact do that. So I think the amendment is very sensible and I would very strongly caution councillors in, in supporting the motion as moved by councillor Roberts and Bowen, considering the potential high profile implications of such a decision. So as such, I commend the amendment and I will not be supporting the motion if it, if it is not successfully amended by councillor Nielsen and Veitch. As such, I will return to the chair and thank you for your indulgence in allowing me to make that contribution. Councillor Bowen, I have a hand up.
Yeah, thanks Mister Mayor. In light of what you've said, I would, I'll withdraw my seconding of the motion. Because I think you're correct, I think there's no getting around it. And whatever we might think, if we, we don't want to sort of inflame things that we've got no control over. And I think in reality, difficulty is point A. I think point B and point C, because we're identifying countries. I mean, we all know what this is about and we all know what we think. But I think we also understand our role. So if the mover, councillor Roberts, is agreeable, I don't support the, I don't like the amendment at all, you know, different to the other council, but I understand the point you make Mister Mayor. If councillor Roberts, if you kept B and C, I think you'll achieve the same result, particularly through C. But I withdraw my support on the basis that A stays in. But if you want to take A out, I'll, I'll continue to second it. But I don't support, I don't support the amendment, so you know, bit of a dilemma here.
Mister Mayor, councillor Mattson, I'm happy to second the motion if councillor Bowen wishes to withdraw.
Thank you, all right, we'll now actually return to the amendment. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Okay, there being, no. Sorry, councillor Mattson, yes?
Look, I'm not sure why this is being deferred. I think it might be simply because we don't want to actually deal with the motion and we're going to punt it to the next council. I don't think that's a valid reason for deferring a matter. So I will vote against deferral.
Thank you, all right, there being no further speakers in this, I will now put the amendment.
Division points.
All those, yep. All those in favour of the amendment as moved by Nielsen and Veitch. Councillor Shuri.
Four.
Councillor Nielsen.
Four.
Councillor Veitch.
Four.
And councillor Luxford.
Four.
Councillor Singh.
Against.
Thank you, councillor Andrews.
Against.
Councillor Bowen.
Against.
Councillor Mattson.
Against the amendment.
Councillor Roberts.
Against being a lame duck.
And councillor De Rocha.
Against.
Councillor De Souza.
Right, against, against.
Councillor Sedd.
For.
Okay, and the mayor is for? Okay, I declare that amendment lost. We now go back to the debate on the motion. Can we please?
Well, I move a further amendment, we take out A.
Okay, thank you, there is an amendment from councillor Bowen to take out A. Is there a second for that?
I'll second it Mister Mayor.
They just put it Mister Mayor with the.
I'd like to speak against it, I'm going to speak against it.
Okay, look, I'll have councillor Roberts speak against it, but I just, I do note that we have consumed a lot of time on this. Councillor Roberts in speaking against it. Unless councillor Sedd, you didn't need to speak on this.
No, no.
Okay, councillor Roberts.
If he's going to speak, I might just have a quick word and then he can respond, sorry.
Okay, that's fine, councillor Bowen on the amendment.
As I said, I am supportive of the intent of the motion. I've always been fairly dubious of sister cities and have always been, have attracted a lot of negative publicity for the council. The, and that's why I've put B in, because it'll be a simple matter of then the council couldn't decide which of those sister cities they want to give notification for without, you know, inflaming issues. That's the purpose of it. We're not the Department of Foreign Affairs, no matter how strongly we might feel. And for that reason, I think you will achieve what you wish to achieve effectively, but without, you know, making things potentially difficult. That's all I'll say on it, that's, that's why I think A should come out.
Thank you, councillor Sedd, you still wave your right to second?
I just want to say that, as I said before, and that's a purpose of my amendment, I actually really do think we should form a sister city with, somewhere within Indonesia. We've been very close with Indonesia, as I said, the council is here, there's a lot of people here. And regardless of the sentiment of international relations, I just don't think Taiwan is, with a representation of four hundred and thirty-three people, nothing against them, but I just don't think that warrants a sister city with Taiwan. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, councillor Roberts.
Yeah, thanks Mister Mayor, I, I can't support this, this amendment. And I, you know, I was, I noticed you did the extraordinary step of stepping in there. So I note the former member from Maruba, Bob Carr, is a strong supporter of, of of the elephant in the room. And, you know, I find it, I'm not going to speculate on what phone calls you've received, but it's quite extraordinary you making that insertion into the debate there. And all of a sudden, you know, the Labour councillors turned around there. So it's quite disappointing, but councillors, I'd just like to remind you that there is huge community sentiment of sympathy for Taiwan and huge concern in the community, including Rammek, about what's going on in Taiwan from, from their close neighbour. And they're quite revolted by it. And the behaviour that that country is doing towards us as well. You know, they, they gave us a fourteen point list of grievances, you know, that we have to, you know, correct before normal diplomatic relations is returned to normal. One of those grievances was this, this foreign relations legislation that councillor Bowen mentioned, the Belt and Road where, you know, there's potential international, you know, foreign influence in our institutions. So what are we going to do, roll that back? So it is actually extremely concerning. I think this amendment tonight sends a signal to the community that the Rammek council does not support Taiwan, our fellow democracy, our fellow island democracy of twenty-five million people. And I think, you know, they would be scratching their head in wonderment. Why would you not support Taiwan? Why would you not support a city that would be just like Rammek on the coast there? I think they're, they're worthy of that. And in, in fact, the motion, the original motion isn't even suggesting that we go to that point. It's just simply calling for a report. And to turn away, it's a really bad look. And, you know, it makes, it makes Rammek council look like they don't support Taiwan when they reject a motion where we just simply wanted to explore the possibility of a sister city with a city in Taiwan. So I cannot in all good conscience support this amendment, thank you.
Thank you councillor De Souza, are you speaking on the amendment?
Yes, yes Mister Mayor.
Thank you councillor De Souza.
Thank you Mister, I'll be supporting what Bowen and Sayder put forward. Thank you, Mr. I'll be supporting what Bowen and Sade put forward. You know what was concerning to me was we were politicising this debate. Now, when I looked up what a sister city or a twin city relationship, it's a form of legal and social agreement between two geographically and politically distinct localities for the purpose of promoting cultural and commercial ties. That's why we have sister cities. Not about making political statements. I'm like you councillor Roberts. I am very aware of Taiwan and the problems it faces, but this isn't the forum to bring it forward. We saw Tony Abbott go over and speak his mind. He's a personal friend. But in saying that, he made a statement. And it's his right as an individual to make a statement. But as a local government body, we have to be cautious how we proceed on this matter. But anyway, as I said, the purpose of a sister city arrangement is to promote cultural and commercial ties. Wherever we go, that's, we've got Kooji and we can promote our our beaches, our businesses, encourage visitors from those countries or sister cities to come here. Councillor Prokopades was excellent at doing this. And he did, I know his daughter's listening to this. He did it particularly well. Him and the other gentleman from the Labor Party went over and they built strong ties. And they said, thank you to those people who came to Australia and helped us build a culturally diverse society. Anyway, I spoke in my piece, I've listened to everyone else. This motion or Sade and Bowen's motion has my full support. I'll leave it at that. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Singh.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm speaking against the amendment, but not on the reasons espoused by councillor Roberts. I think we, as local government councillors, we are not federal MPs. We shouldn't be venturing into the area of international relations. The reason that I am in favour of the original motion is because A, we're going to get a report on the feasibility from the general manager. And secondly, I've been to Taiwan before. I've visited several cities in Taiwan. And I think it would be a good opportunity if one day we ever, for good reasons, have one of the Taiwanese cities as our sister city. I've visited China about three times on a social occasion. I think what we have at the moment with the city of Hangzhou as our city city is also good. And we should maintain that. However, we cannot link the two together because obviously it's very sensitive. So the motion before us now, or rather the amendment, if it was carried, would remove, we would not be considering the original motion, which I'm in favour. I'm in favour of considering a sister city, not just with Taiwan, but also India. Because India, we're looking at going to be one of the biggest trading partners in future. And the number of Indian migrants is going to be increasing. And India is going to be the, a country with the largest population in the world in 10 to 20 years' time. It's a great country with many different ethnicity in the country and different cities, hundreds of cities there. And Indonesia, as I suggested before. So I think we should give the opportunity for our general manager to produce a report on the feasibility of establishing a sister city from all the three countries mentioned, or one or two of them. For that reason, I'm against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Singh. I have a hand up from councillor Bowen. Councillor Bowen.
Mr Mayor, I realise it's an amendment, but I just wanted to respond very quickly to some of the comments from councillor Roberts. Just to say, yeah, okay, he doesn't want me to.
So there's a point of order from councillor Roberts?
He doesn't want me to respond to the amendment.
Look, I think, while I do appreciate it, councillor Roberts is right. There being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put the amendment, all those in favour.
Question.
Sorry, yes, councillor Bowen, yes, you have a question?
A question, general manager. If the report was, the report that's proposed in A, that would include the possibility of a sister city with Taiwan. Do I have that correct, general manager? In the amendment?
Through you, Mr Mayor. It doesn't specifically say Taiwan, but it does say an expansion. So we would look at the relevant cities and bring back that report.
Thank you. And if, in relation to B, follow-up question. If there was a city that we didn't wish to continue a sister city relationship, that's something that could be taken up in B. Do I have that correct?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Yes, that is correct. Typically, in reviewing appropriate sister cities, we would look at our objectives and what we're working towards as a city. And look at how we could receive benefit from a relationship with a foreign country and vice versa.
Thank you, general manager. And I appreciate you dealing with all this complicated stuff without a lot of notice. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've got the answers to my questions.
Thank you. Okay, I will now put the amendment and we will go straight to a division on the request of councillor Roberts. Okay, thank you. Okay, councillor Shuri.
Oh, not sure. Um, four.
Against, go against.
Thank you. Councillor Nielsen.
Four.
Thank councillor Veitch.
Four.
Councillor Stavridos is absent. Councillor Luxford.
Four.
Councillor Singh.
Against.
Councillor Andrews.
Against.
Councillor Bowen.
And four.
Councillor Mattson.
Against.
Councillor Roberts.
Against.
Councillor De Rocha.
Against.
Councillor De Souza.
Four.
Councillor Sid.
Four.
And the mayor is for. Thank you. Okay, the amendment now becomes the motion.
Put it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, there being no further speakers on the motion, I will now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Who's going to call Bob?
Okay, all those against.
You can.
I declare that, I declare that carried.
Why don't you call Daryl?
Thank you, councillors. Now to other significant issues of state. NM81/21, move councillor Roberts, Christmas carols and fireworks. Councillor Roberts, do you seek to move it? Is there a second out for the motion?
I am withdrawing.
So sorry, there was a lot going on there. Can someone, so councillor Roberts, do I have a second?
I'm withdrawing the motion, Mr Mayor.
Okay, okay, councillor Roberts is now withdrawing the motion. So as the motion is now withdrawn, we now go to
Because of the
Previous decision?
Previous decision.
Yep. Thank you very much, councillor Roberts. I will now move to NM82/21. Notice of motion from councillor Sid, coastal open spaces, summer management policy specific to Malabar, Little Bay and La Perouse. Councillor Sid, is there a second? Okay, that is seconded by councillor De Rocha. Okay.
That was De Souza, I think.
Yeah, I think I'm happy. Noel just moved me to it. Sorry, Mr Mayor. No, Noel, you take it.
It makes no difference. The important thing is the intention of the motion.
Go ahead.
We're all on the same team.
Okay, moved by councillor Sid, seconded by councillor De Souza. Councillor Sid, would you now like to move your motion?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor. And Mr Mayor, I'd just like to point out, I'm moving this with a slight amendment. There's point V or five, that traffic control on the Marine Parade pedestrian crossing adjacent to McKean Street. Throughout the school holidays has a traffic manager, as in either what you'd call a stop-go person or a lollipop person, for the same reasoning that I pointed out within my summer management plan. That as much as the South Ward suffered tremendously through the summer months last year and through the COVID months. So did that traffic point of the pedestrian crossing there in Marine Parade. So I've added that on here. Basically, Mr Mayor, and I'll get through this very quickly, that I prefer to be proactive rather than reactive when it comes to the summer months. We went, as you all know as councillors, that last year in October, the long weekend, we had a five kilometre bank up at Bonnerong Road. There's not enough, there's insufficient toilets, especially at Little Bay, there's only one. There's hardly anywhere to park. People park on verges, people park across driveways. At Little Bay, at the Arab Bay, Philip Bay, La Perouse. The traffic bank up, people can't get to their homes. There's an overflow of rubbish. Our trucks get stuck in the built-up traffic as well. They find it hard to get down to the beaches and pick up the rubbish. There's an overflow of rubbish. And unfortunately, sometimes that ends up in the water. And it also brings vermin, et cetera. And at the same time, when we try to mitigate traffic and do the right thing, last year, we had traffic controllers in charge who just would not let anyone go past a certain checkpoint. So the businesses down at La Perouse, especially the Boachet, which is very popular, had christings on and functions and no one could get to those functions because they were told by the traffic controllers they weren't allowed to go down Bonnerong Road to get there. So we just need to have a policy and a good policy that needs to be discussed with the police, with the eastern business police, with the community associations of Prince Henry, Malabar precinct, the Bays and Beaches precinct. These are people who live in the area they can actually adhere to. They won't create the policy, but they can help our council officers create the policy. And I know this puts a lot of pressure on council officers, but it really does need to come back to council at the next meeting. Because we won't be back. We will be back a bit earlier. When I wrote this, we weren't coming back till about the 11th of July, but now we're coming back a bit earlier. But there'll still be two or three weeks with our councillors who can take
Noel will be back.
Of the residents. So, so Mr Mayor, I put this to the councillors that we really do need some form of traffic management. We're on a peninsula. We have one road in, one road out. And it was an absolute disaster. And this summer will prove to be just as warm as what last summer was. So we really do need to put something in place. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, can I make a quick procedural call?
Sure, Mr councillor Mattson.
I'm sorry. Look, earlier on, you asked me if I was withdrawing NM79/21. I said yes. But really what I meant was, it was a reference to the previous business paper from last week in which there was an old motion on the Randwick Environment Park. Sorry, I got confused and thought you were referring to that one. I actually do want to move NM79. Sorry. Everybody are going backwards.
So councillor De Souza, I think, Mr Mayor, can we just finish this one first and councillor De Souza and we can vote, go back? Yes, Mr Mayor?
I reserve my right, but the former mayor has spoken beautifully, encapsulated all our ideas. And he says this, he said it so eloquently, 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 said it so eloquently. So I'll leave it at that, Mr Mayor. Thank you. Mr Mayor?
Mayor, you're on mute.
No, I'm not on mute, no.
Okay, sorry.
I missed the gears on this.
Thank you, thank you.
I was very happy with everything that was said, Mr Mayor. I reserve my right.
Before we begin, okay, I have a procedural motion in front of me, which I have to deal with immediately. What I will do is I will move it, just that it be, well, I'll ask councillor Mattson to move it. And then we will return to this debate and I'll allow councillor.
Mr McInnes, over in the interest of time, if councillor Mattson doesn't mind, I think everyone will just be voting on this without a debate, councillor Mattson. So we could actually finish it off if you don't mind and we'll go back to you.
Okay. Yes, okay. By all means.
Oh, sorry, councillor De Rocha's got his hand up, but then we can get it back. Yep.
Councillor De Rocha.
I totally commend the previous mayor Danny on your motion here. We all saw what happened while COVID restrictions were going up and down, round and round, and the confusion sort of everywhere. The South Ward became so much more popular than it ever did before. People came from everywhere. People started taking over our streets, our parking areas. The residents couldn't have visitors. And Danny was competent. And he was competent from the representative as the mayor, you know, on council media, et cetera. And us councillors in the South Ward and even, you know, some a bit further on, were getting smashed about how our area was being violated, how our area was being, you know, like we just couldn't manage it. How it was out of control. And I think this motion brings up a lot of issues that we need to start taking on board now. And I commend Danny for this motion.
Well done, well done.
Okay, councillor Sid, do you want to close the debate?
No, we'll just put it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Okay, all those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Councillor Mattson, would you like to move the procedural motion to put your motion back on the paper?
Certainly. That motion pursuant to notice NM79/21. Notice of motion, councillor Mattson, adoption of a comprehensive council policy on Randwick Environment issues. Be re-put, re-included in the agenda for tonight.
Thank you. Is there a seconder on that procedural motion?
I'm happy to second that and then I'll second his motion as well.
Okay, thank you. I will now put the procedural motion. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. We'll now move to that motion NM79/21 by councillor Mattson. Moved, councillor Mattson, seconded by councillor Nielsen.
Councillors, Randwick Environment Park is becoming more and more well-known. It's becoming recognised as one of the alternative places on the eastern suburbs. It is coming, it is being seen as a place to go. There are now a lot of issues on it. Over the last year, I've noticed an increase in the number of issues coming to me as an east ward councillor in relation to it. This includes the bushfire burn-offs, the risk of uncontrolled bushfires, the sustainability of the wetlands, needs caused by various residents to trim that tree or this tree, proposals on what should be the footpath configuration. I'm suggesting that we give consideration to the motion as I've got it. I think one of the solutions we have is to bring the community into a formal relationship with the council by opening up the environment committee and getting it to actually seek and run by proposals with the community. So I would ask for some. I've tried to include in it every single possible issue that I've been asked about in the last year or so.
Thank you. Councillor Nielsen, can you now unmute yourself, please, and second the motion? Councillor Nielsen, you'll have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, sure. Sorry. Second, I reserve my right.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers? Okay, thank you. Are there any other speakers on this particular motion?
Yeah, I'll just say something. I support the motion. However, I find it, it's going to be quite burdensome on staff to comply with it. So I'm a bit disappointed with it, but I think the intent of it is clear and worthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, councillor Mattson, do you want to close the debate on this?
Yes, certainly. I would like, this will be my last term of council. Throughout my term, various years on council, and councillor Singh will also mention it. Bundock Street has come up again and again and again over the years. It's, to my mind, one of the key issues that's always there in the background of any Randwick city councillor. And I think we should move to encompass it and embrace it.
Thank you. Okay, I'll now put the motion. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you. That now concludes the notices of motion. There is one further item, which is the confidential report. So, Mr. McNiven, can I just confirm that we can now move into confidential session?
I can confirm we're no longer broadcasting.
Okay, thank you. Can I please now have a mover for CO66/21, tender for small, large markets, including public lighting, renewable energy, and LGCS tender number SSROCK T2021-12? Okay, so I, look, it was a bit difficult, but I'm going to say it's moved by councillor Luxford and seconded by councillor Shuri.
Fine, happy.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Luxford, did you want to speak to the motion?
No, Mr. Mayor. Reserve my right.
Okay, councillor Shuri is the seconder. Did you want to speak?
No, I think we should just put it.
Okay, thank you. Before I do that, are there any questions on this?
No, I'm very happy with the fact that we're going for 100% renewable source.
Okay, thank you. There being no further questions, no comments, I will now put it.
Oh, sorry, I did have a question.
Okay, thank you, councillor Veach.
You, Mr. Mayor, probably to the general manager or relevant staff person. I note, generally speaking, the results of tenders, just in terms of the, you know, very basic result is published in the minutes. But as this is a joint tender with SSROCK, could you provide clarification as to when this will be, the results of this will be published in the minutes?
Through, Mr. Mayor, the minutes will record the resolution of council, which, based on the mover and seconder, is the recommendation included within the business paper in regards to the publishing of the successful energy company. SSROCK would normally make an announcement, and I would expect that that would happen if not tomorrow, the next day, once all contracts are signed by the relevant councils. And I would note to councillors, just while I do have your ear, that whilst we have been able to achieve 100% renewables, we've also achieved a price reduction for our electricity over the five-year period. So it has been a good result all round with about $1 million savings over the five years.
Well done.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. There being no further speakers and no further questions. Councillor Luxford, did you want to close the debate?
Oh, no, I'm fine. Just put.
Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Beg your pardon? Oh, I don't believe it is. However, additionally, it is unanimous. Does anyone object? Okay, if it is unanimous, you don't require. I'm happy to go to a division if you like.
I would recommend a division, Mr. Mayor.
If it's unanimous, it should be written in the minutes. It's unanimous.
Okay, look.
I think the general manager has advised each division.
Yep, look, while I agree with councillor Roberts, but just for the benefit of the meeting, I see no issue in going to a division in light of what it is, achieves the same aim and provides no confusion. So I will go around the horseshoe. Councillor Shuri?
Four.
And councillor Nielsen?
Four.
Councillor Veach?
Four.
Councillor Luxford?
Four.
Councillor Singh? Councillor Singh?
Four, sorry.
Councillor Andrews?
Four.
Councillor Bowen? Councillor Bowen?
I think he might have had to have slipped out for a while.
Yeah, okay, councillor Bowen is now at the last meeting. Okay, thank you. Councillor Mattson?
Four.
Councillor Roberts?
Yes.
Councillor De Rocha? Councillor De Rocha?
Four.
Councillor D'Souza?
Four.
Councillor Sed?
Four.
And Mayor Parker is forced, so it was unanimous. Thank you. Okay. There being no further business, I declare the meeting closed at 9:17 PM. Thank you, councillor.
Well done, everyone. Good night. Take care. Bye.
Well done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Goodbye.
Cool, Bob now?
No, you call Scomo. He'll love to, you call Scomo. He'll love to, you call Scomo. He'll love to, you call.